The application's out of order. The first application is the application of Kyle and Maggie McGrady. It's for a special exception pursuant to Article 4, Section 4.2, Schedule I, permitted uses, and Article 5, Section 5.2, to permit the conversion of an existing three-unit residential structure to four units. This is for property located at 92 Court Street in the R2 single-family residential zone.
Good evening. It's been a while. It's good to see all of you without a mask and be back to somewhat normalcy. It's been here a while since I've been here, so I'm not sure. Last time I was here, I took the mic and went over to the plan, if that's okay?
Yeah, please do. Just make sure you take the mic with you, or else the folks at home won't be able to hear you.
So, for the record, my name is Henry Boyd with Millennium Engineering, and with me is Maggie McGrady. And we appreciate the indulgence of being first, and we'll try to keep this prompt for everybody else in the audience that may have a long night. This is a beautiful property at the corner of Court Street and Chadwick Lane. Chadwick Lane is a private way that's owned by the Academy. A really nice house that I think I'd like Maggie to come up and share with what her and Kyle have done inside of the structure. This used to be a four-unit dwelling. It's currently a three-unit dwelling, and the only reason that we're here tonight is to ask that it be basically reinstated or recognized again by the town as a four-unit structure. Most of the criteria for the special exception in the conversion are actually parking requirements. So, they have more than adequate parking. They have an existing garage that's on-site with five parking spaces within it, and then three parallel spaces off to the existing driveway, and that's really how the property is used currently. So, literally, nothing is changing on this site, or will change, other than the fantastic renovations that they've done inside of the structure and what they've done outside of it. But the structure itself will not change in size. They have adequate screening. The one thing that did happen is they were saddened to have some wind damage to, well, one very large tree, the 60-inch tree that's on the north side, actually toppled. And thank God, it went in this direction somehow miraculously and didn't hit the power lines, it didn't hit the house. That sense has been removed. And when the tree removal person was there, they did inspect this other 40-inch tree that was there, and they felt that it was diseased and probably would meet the same fate in a heavy windstorm. So, they had that removed. The parcel is just under an acre, at 92/100ths of an acre. There are some wetlands in the back that Mark West has mapped. So, we are outside of the wetland buffer. And as I said, nothing is planned for construction anyway. So, I would introduce you to Maggie McGrady, and if you'd like, if it's your custom to have her go through the criteria, she prepared the application herself so she could do that.
Yeah, so as Henry was saying, my husband and I purchased the property last year. In August, we did quite an extensive renovation, bringing the house back up to its former beauty. We did mostly inside renovations, flooring, painting, kitchens, bathrooms, that sort of thing. And we did re-landscaped the back part of the property. And in the future, after the trees have fallen, we will be re-landscaping the front and side of the yard to keep up with how we did the backyard. So, I'm just going to briefly go over my application as I wrote for you. I hope everyone has a copy. So, point number one, application for a special exception. Currently existing use and/or situation is currently a three-family, a four-bedroom, four-bathroom, 2,392-square-foot home with 100 square feet of frontage on Court Street, and a detached pre-existing five-car garage/barn with a lot size of 39,941 square feet. Point number two, the proposed use standard situation. A conversion from a three-family to a four-family residential home. The property was converted from a four-family home to a three-family home in the tax year of 1999 from a previous owner. Point number three is just about the maps and plans you have in your possession, an Exeter tax map of the area as well as a survey by Henry's Millennium Engineering. Point number four, number A, letter A. The use is a permitted special exception as set forth in Article 4.2. The proposed use is consistent with other homes on Court Street. The subject property has 39,941 square feet, which is roughly 219% of the requested lot size for a legal four-family conversion. And the property has eight off-street parking spaces, which is roughly 160% of the required off-street parking for a legal four-family conversion. Letter B, the proposed use will not change the external appearance of the property. Letter number C, that the proposed use will be compatible with Zone District and adjoining post-1972 development where it is located. The proposed use is compatible with Zone District, and there are many multifamily homes on Court Street. Letter D, the adequate landscaping and screening are provided as required, and the proposed usage of the property will comply with landscaping and screening as required by the town. E, the adequate off-street parking and loading is provided, and ingress and egress is so designed as to cause minimum interference with traffic on abutting streets. And there is currently adequate off-street parking and loading provided in the pre-existing five-car garage/barn and three off-street parking spaces adjacent to the pre-existing driveway. Letter F, that the use conforms with all applicable regulations governing the district where located, except as may otherwise be determined for large-scale developments. The proposed use conforms with applicable regulations, and the proposed use is a four-family dwelling in an R2 zone. G, as condition of the special exception approval, the applicant may be required to obtain Town Plan Review and/or Planning Board approval of the site plan. Additionally, the Board of Adjustment may require the applicant to obtain Planning Board approval of the site prior to rendering a decision on the application for special exception, and we acknowledge that. H, that the use shall not adversely affect abutting or nearby property values. The proposed use is consistent with several homes on Court Street, and the proposed use will not change the external appearance of the property. I, if the application is...
You don't need to read.
Okay.
Yeah, if they're not applicable, but thank you.
They're not applicable. So, thank you very much.
Right.
Yes.
Save you five minutes of reading.
Thank you very much. Much appreciated.
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
I just, there were a few things in the criteria for conversion that I just wanted to double-check.
Sure.
So, are the owners going to be residing in the property?
Yes, my husband and I own it, and we're currently living at the property.
Okay. And that'll be a permanent situation?
We have no plans on leaving. We really enjoy it here.
We do understand that that's a requirement if you're going to rent it out. Is the owner, I think the owner has to be in one of the units. Okay.
Right, yeah. We live and we really enjoy the property, and we love it there.
Just so you know. And about the garage, is it dry? You have five spaces. Do you drive around the garage to get to the back ones, or is it pull-through?
So, there is, the setup of the garage is, there's three bays, and there's two tandem spaces and one single space.
Okay.
And they're all easily accessible by the driveway.
Okay. Those are really my two questions.
Okay.
Yeah, I had a similar question about the parking. The three of the parking spaces are in a gravel area. Is that, that's an existing gravel area?
That was, I mean, we added more gravel. It was, you know, it was a little rough when we purchased it, so we cleaned it up a little. But yes, that area was there, but I believe it was more so dirt.
And then I have a question for Doug, if you don't mind. Well, I see that one of the, space eight is right on Court Street, sort of in the setback. Are there any restrictions on parking? Okay.
And I just want to put in board some information. I did talk to the planner on some of the reasons to send the planning board or review about the planner. We looked at it, and it's like, there are really no changes. There's no site development, so.
Yep.
Just for you.
Yep. Thank you.
Kind of assumed.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Any other questions? Anything else you'd like to?
We do have a neighbor who is supporting us. He is on Zoom if you'd like to hear from him.
That's the next step, so, that's perfect.
Sorry, yeah.
No, no, no. So, thank you. Then, if you're finished with your presentation, we'll move on to public comment.
Okay.
Before we get to the Zoom, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for, against, about this proposal? Seeing none, we'll move to Zoom. I have no idea how to get the person up on Zoom, so I'm hoping that Extra TV can assist.
If it helps, I don't know if you have to search for it. It's Mark DeFabio. There he is.
Do I need to unmute him?
Usually IT does that.
Usually we would have heard the mysterious voice from above by now, I guess what to do.
Here he comes.
Yes, Mr. DeFabio.
I don't know if...
He might be on mute.
He doesn't appear to be.
Well, his hand is still, oh, I don't know.
Oh, we're hustling. I heard his lips moving.
Hello? That's him.
Okay. Mr. DeFabio, if you're ready?
Yes. Can you hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Okay, great. I'm in 94 Court Street. My property directly abouts the property in question. I just, you know, would like to support them. They've been, you know, wonderful neighbors since they moved in. You know, they live there. It's, you know, I have no concerns whatsoever, and I would, you know, be very much in support of their proposal.
Thank you.
You know, there's no question for me with noise or traffic or anything. They're, you know, super nice and just done a great job fixing up the property and, you know, contributing. So, I would just like to support them.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. It appears that that was the only person on the Zoom. So, seeing as there, well, there's no one else to speak to this, I'm assuming you have nothing further to comment. Usually get a chance to comment on the abutters comments, but I would think you don't need to in this case. Then I would ask for a motion to close the public session.
So, moved?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
First order of business, we've got four permanent members, two alternates. We have to choose one alternate to vote on this application. I don't know either, if either of the alternates feel strongly that they want to vote on this.
Well, I used to live on Court Street. Maybe I shouldn't vote.
Sure. Well, do you want to vote on this one, and Ann on the other, or?
No, she said she shouldn't.
Oh, you shouldn't vote, okay.
Although I don't think that's...
I don't think that's positive either. Actually, I think that knowledge is perfectly helpful. So, well, Ann, do you want to vote on this application then? Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Any comments from the board?
Mr. Chair, I think that this is a perfectly standard request and makes perfect sense, and the applicant did a good job of responding to the points. I don't think that we need to go through and march through the various criteria because there's, essentially, we're going back in time on this to the situation that existed as of 20 years ago with no external changes to the property. So, I would, pending any discussion, be prepared to make a motion to approve this.
I concur.
I would, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the only comment I would make, because I am familiar with this property, and they have done some external improvements, they've done a very nice job...
Yep.
...of fixing up what was a tired property, so...
Agreed.
I have no doubt they'll be good stewards.
Mr. Chair, then, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application for a special exception for the application of Kyle and Maggie McGrady as proposed.
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
There you go.
Thank you.
That's it. Congratulations.
Thank you, Henry.
All right.
Very good, thanks.
I guess technically, I used to live on Court Street, too.
Right.
Since 1960.
Next, why don't we take, we had said we would take the, another matter out of order, which is the request for an extension of the existing approval for Excel Construction Management for Friedman Realty Trust. Is anyone for the applicant in the audience tonight or on Zoom?
Chair's not.
If she's not, which is not necessary for this type of request. So, I would entertain, I would entertain discussion amongst the board.
I think it's pretty standard for the board to approve such a request, especially during the past year and a half. It's been a very challenging time for real estate. And so, I would be happy to make a motion to extend. I guess, I guess the standard extension is one year?
One year.
To extend the permission on case 1814 by one year.
So, when was due to expire? I just want to check in on that part. It was...
July 17.
Hey, you wrote the letter.
I did write the letter. I'm surprised I don't remember that. So, we're basically a few days beyond the expiration, but given, again, all the...
I think our process has been that is the, if the request is before...
That's fine.
This was.
And our meeting was, didn't happen last month, so...
Right.
Can't really blame them. So, yeah.
Okay. We do need, Ann, would you like to vote again?
Certainly.
Then I guess I would entertain a motion.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to grant the request for an extension of the variance on case 1814 for one additional year, which would take it until July 19, 2022.
July 17.
Apologies.
Seconded.
Yes, you're right. July 17 was the meeting. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair says aye.
So, Doug, do you think my reaction is we're going to be covered up with this kind of a request? There's two issues. There's a dead time.
I'm not so sure there are about any off-the-top... Depending on their... Epping, epping load? I can't think of any off the top of my head.
Okay.
Most projects I've seen, apparently, it's a special exception, pretty much a move forward. So, yeah, I don't see a lot of that.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it is.
Moving on, we have a letter request from, we're going to move on to the Andersons' application. We have a letter request from Attorney Passe, basically asking that we first address the issue of whether the special exception use, under the special exception, meets the definition of bed and breakfast. And then, and then the special exception application, and then the variance if the special exception is not approved. In my mind, this really is a threshold question under the first criteria of the special exception, the special exception criteria. So, I guess I would look to the board to get your thoughts about whether we need to answer these separately, or whether this, we should go right into the continued application.
What do you mean by a threshold?
Well, it, the section, in my mind, this gets basically to whether the use is a permitted special exception as set forth in Article 4.2, Schedule I, which is the first prong of the special exception criteria.
Do we have some guidance from Town's attorney on whether it meets the definition?
We do have guidance from the Town's attorney for our consideration, and I think we can consider it ourselves as well. I guess my question, and I'm not sure it matters, is whether we, you know, we take this on separately, or we take it on as part of the special application, special exception application. And again, I'm not sure it matters. I think it's the first thing we need to consider.
Either way, yeah. We're going to talk about it first thing.
Yep. And I guess I would ask, I would ask the applicant if there's, if you want to give any presentation ahead of time, or if you'd like us to just jump right into that initial question.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, Justin Passe here from DTC Lawyers in Exeter, joined tonight by the Andersons to my right. Good to see everybody in person, happy to be here tonight. And I agree with the chair's characterization here. I really see it as a threshold issue. Just a real quick summary, the last, I was unable to come to the April meeting where the last time this application was before the board. My associate Brendan O'Donnell was here on the Andersons' behalf. And at that meeting, this question was raised about the nature of the use and whether or not it even, excuse me, constitutes a bed and breakfast. So, in response to that, we put together a letter, we kind of make two arguments I would like to summarize right now. My proposal was, let's talk about this first. If the board's determination is that it's not a bed and breakfast, then it's not eligible for a special exception, and I think it's more efficient, we can just move on to the variance request if that pleases the board. And Mr. Anderson has a prepared statement on this issue specifically that he would like to read as well. So, with your pleasure, I'll just proceed.
Yeah. I think that that makes sense to me, so this will be the beginning of the continuation of the public hearing for the special exception application.
Exactly. Very quickly before that, just as foundational issues, we just wanted to just acknowledge a couple of things. The first thing is, we're aware of this potential perspective on the Andersons in general, sort of like an application fatigue, because we've been here a lot. We were here in 2017 when the initial Word Barn was permitted. We came back in 2020 attempting to permit a nano brewery at the Word Barn, and now we're here on this application. This application is really derivative of a zoning enforcement issue that was brought to the Andersons' attention back in December when they got a letter from Doug that basically said, hey, short-term rentals are not permitted. The recommendation at that time was to come to this board and perhaps try to get a special exception for bed and breakfast. That is the application that we initially approved before those questions were raised. So, that's the first. We wanted to acknowledge that, but we really believe that we're here right now to essentially permit what has been the status quo of the property for decades. And we'll talk about that, but that's really our perspective. We just want to finally come into compliance with what the status quo of this property has been, because we think the property is very well-suited to accommodate the uses that we're proposing here. So, that's the first issue. The second issue is, the board's probably aware, I know Mr. Eastman is aware of this petition, there are a lot of people in this room in support of the Andersons', I presume. We want to make clear and acknowledge for the record that the Andersons understand well that the town is not trying to shut the Word Barn down, and as the myth and the lore grows, you start to hear stuff like that. We appreciate what we're here for. We're here talking about an apartment that the Andersons did for a couple of years and wish to continue to rent out on a short-term basis to people. So, that's why we're here. We want to acknowledge that formally. And then, the third issue is this issue that we're talking about, this foundational issue. So, in that context, at the last meeting, at the April meeting, reviewing the record, watching the video myself, and even listening to some of the discussion that kind of happened after the application was continued, we saw two questions being raised about this foundational question. Are we a bed and breakfast? Is that what we're actually proposing or not? And the first question was whether or not bed and breakfasts are required to be exclusively enclosed within the primary dwelling of the owner-operator. Our position, of course, is that that is not required. Mr. Pryor, I think you did a good job of pointing out to other times this board has interpreted that issue, and even to other properties, 72 High Street being one of them, where the board has allowed portions of a bed and breakfast use to occur outside the primary dwelling. The real issue here is that to be a bed and breakfast, the owner has to be present on-site. I think that's been the traditional interpretation from the ZBA, and that's what makes the most sense. Otherwise, it's a hotel. Otherwise, it's an Airbnb, which is, you know, the property is being rented out. Our understanding of the bed and breakfast use is one where the owner is on-site, they are providing food and beverage. That is the case here. As we indicate in our application, there is local honey and tea and coffee that is offered by the Andersons. And of course, as we'll get into, and with some assistance with technology, we're talking about a single studio space that's existed for decades in the Word Barn building that is totally distinct from the Word Barn use, the rest of the Word Barn, but which is an integral part of the property where the Andersons live with their family. So, that's the first question, whether or not it's required to be exclusively enclosed within the primary dwelling. We think the answer is no. We think the ZBA has always maintained that the answer is no, and the most recent example of that is the 72 High Street example. So, that's the first question. The second question, the only other question as far as I'm concerned, that was discussed at the April hearing, was whether or not the Andersons' proposal violates the definitions, the bed and breakfast definitions, requirement that bed and breakfasts not be used for any other hospitality or business-related use. We would submit that we comply with that, too. And if you saw in our letter, which I think is dated June 1st, we actually did some digging into this question to find out what were the legislators, the planning board members, frankly, in 1995 thinking when they drafted this definition, when they included it into the zoning ordinance. And so, the first thing is that it's really an issue of just regulatory construction, which basically just means, look at the ordinance, if there are defined terms, use those definitions. If there are no defined terms, assign plain language to the words, and then decide what it means. In this case, the actual language is, "A bed and breakfast shall not be used for any other hospitality or business-related uses." So, the first threshold question is, are the Andersons proposing to use this one-bedroom studio accommodation for any purpose besides the bed and breakfast use? And the answer is no. As you'll see in the video, it's a small space. Frankly, it can't accommodate any other use. It is just a place for people to stay. It's short-term rentals, it's a couple of nights over a long weekend, and it can't accommodate a wedding or a business function. And that's really where the second, I think, more important point of this question comes in. When you look at the legislative history, the planning board meetings from January of 1995, Mr. Dolly, Mike Dolly, was the guy behind the language that we're talking about in this definition. And he said, and we quote in the letter, but I'll read it to you anyways. "Mr. Dolly indicated that he was concerned about the use of a bed and breakfast for other functions, such as weddings and business meetings, and that he would like to see the proposed definition for bed and breakfast revised to preclude those types of uses." So, the definition we're talking about was designed to prevent someone from essentially bootstrapping into a bed and breakfast, which was going to be permitted by special exception. It was going to be something that was, you know, not requiring a variance. It was designed to prevent somebody from taking that bed and breakfast use and really turning it into something else that's bigger, that has a higher impact. The idea was, let's keep bed and breakfasts small, and let's keep them distinct from other uses which may not be compatible with the surrounding area. And why is that important? That's important because, did everyone see that? That's how quick my hands are.
It's a good catch.
That's important because this board already looked at the Word Barn use and already determined that based on the nature of this property, which is five-and-a-half acres in size, totally insulated from surrounding properties, and which has the support, really, of the neighborhood, that the Word Barn use, which actually is kind of like a big use, which attracts people onto site for venues, for music, and for other events, which are sort of important to the community, that the property is perfectly suited for that. So, the inverse of what was trying to be protected is actually happening here. We're proposing a very minor one-bedroom bed and breakfast on a property which has already been determined by the ZBA to accommodate a much larger use. already been determined by the ZBA to accommodate a much larger use. So, I think we're consistent with what the purpose of the regulation was, we're consistent with what Mr. Dolly was trying to prevent. We're not sneaking a bed and breakfast about to the ZBA so that there can be a venue at the property, there already is a venue at the property, and this minor use is totally consistent with the historic use of that exact space. As we detail in our application, this apartment was a long-term rental for decades. I understand it wasn't permitted, that's the status, that's facts, that's, that's the reality, but notwithstanding, it was a long-term rental for decades, and as far as we're concerned, the town records contain no complaints, and for two years, from 2018 until the Anderson received the, the letter from the town in, in December of last year, it was used as a short-term rental, again, without any complaints. I would suggest that, that's because this property is so well-accommodated to handle it, and the use is totally indiscernible from the road, and that property looks the same today as it's ever looked. And the short-term nature that we're proposing is actually less impactful than what was happening on the property for decades, where somebody was living there full-time. That's not the case now. The proposal is just, again, short-term rentals, which is less than full-time, which, again, translates into a less impactful use. So those are the two sort of foundational issues that came up in April that we wanted to address upfront. You know, obviously don't know what the town attorney's interpretation of all of this was, our suggestion and hope is that the board make this threshold determination about the special exception, and find that we do fit within the, the definition of bed and breakfast, so that we can proceed on the special exception course, instead of having to, you know, try for the variance. Obviously, I can answer questions, as I said, Mr. Anderson does have a prepared statement on this issue, it's not the rest of the application.
Of course.
Mr. Passa, would you comment on the following? In our definition of bed and breakfast, it doesn't specify, it doesn't say that portion of the property which is available for rent. It says, "The primary, a bed and breakfast is the primary dwelling of an owner-operator." And so, where we're, where we got caught up, you referenced my comments the previous meeting, I was the chair at the time of the, of the May meeting, which is why my name came up there. And where I got caught, and where I'm still getting caught on this definition, while I respect your going back and, and looking at the 1995, this is the definition that was approved by the voters of Exeter, and it's, it's the laws of the town of Exeter now. It's the rules we have to follow. And it says, "The primary dwelling of an owner-operator is the bed and breakfast, and shall not be used for any other hospitality or business-related uses." While at the time, in, in the planning board notes, Mr. Dolly gave a list of possible uses, that was not an exclusive list. It wasn't, "These are the three things that we're trying to avoid," it was "such as." And so, I'm still kind of caught up on the fact that a bed and breakfast is the property. And my sense of this definition is that, unfortunately, the Andersons have to choose between having one use or the other, that it cannot be both. It cannot be a bed and breakfast and another hospitality or business-related use, which is what we already have. Do you want to comment on that a little bit?
No, sure, and look, I, I appreciate your interpretation. I think it's a fair interpretation, and, and one that maybe we don't see eye to eye on, and ultimately, I think that that's fine. I think, my point is that there is room for interpretation here. Certainly, there's nothing in the zoning ordinance that says you can't have two uses permitted by special exception on the same property. There's nothing in the zoning ordinance that says you can't have a variance for one use and also have a special exception for another use. So that's, that's another sort of regulatory interpretation. Nothing says you can't do what's being proposed here. And I think the context that Mr. Dolly gives is the most important, because what is the planning board doing when they're proposing zoning changes, right? They are trying to make sure that the uses as defined, and the relief that they are assigning to them, are going to be compatible with the area and the neighborhood. And so, where the planning board is saying, "We're going to allow this use," because the other critical part of the record from the legislative process of 1995, is that they were saying, "We need to make this a special exception use, because we need to let the neighbors weigh in. You're taking a rural or residential area, now you're going to have a somewhat commercial component to this property. So we have to make this a special exception, let the, the residents around them weigh in, and make, and help the process." And so, I think the idea at the time was, well, we're not going to let a, a venue for weddings and business meetings sneak in under the guise of a bed and breakfast. And I'm reading into that, those words, that idea, but I don't see another way where the process makes any sense. To me, it's, it has to be that, we're trying to prevent people from bootstrapping more impactful uses. And the irony here is that the more impactful use is already on the property. That, I mean, and that's the nuance, and that's the irony, and I, I don't have a better way to explain it, I just think that's what was happening in 1995, and it's not going to be the case in every special exception for bed and breakfast that you get, but it's the case in this case.
So, well, this is a sort of a different look at the same issue. I read the definition, and see that the first three words of the definition are "the primary dwelling," not "the primary residence," the primary dwelling. And in law, I know this because I looked on the internet, "A dwelling is a self-contained unit of accommodation used by one or more households as a home, such as a house, apartment, mobile home, houseboat, vehicle, or, or other substantial structure." So, when you realize that arguably the most important feature put in the front of the definition was that the bed and breakfast was to be physically in the primary residence with the, the primary owner. Now, you gave an example of a place where somebody had, I don't know how it developed, but they had a bed and breakfast that functions consistently with the bed and breakfast requirements, and in essence, asked for permission to use a, and a separate structure on the property to supplement their capacity. So the property had a functioning bed and breakfast that included the, the follow-along requirements that you have, including breakfast, and that doesn't mean handing somebody a Have a space, a dining area, in the bed and breakfast, not an adjacent structure capable of accommodating however many guests there may be. So to me, there's been some discussion that, well, what difference does it make? And the entire function of a bed and breakfast is to invite a community into a private home, and allow the homemaker to generate some money, and the visiting folk to meet with and get to know the, the neighborhood. And what you're proposing is, in essence, a one-unit motel, separate from the main It could easily be operated without the owners ever having any contact at all with the guests. And that is certainly not, in my view, the intent of a bed and breakfast.
Certainly, I take your point, Mr. Thielbar. I think that this board's historic interpretation is not so narrow as what you defined. It has not been interpreted to mean it has to be the dwelling house, as I've listed. I believe there's another example, a recent example of a, a bed and breakfast which was permitted with a unit outside the primary dwelling. That the idea is, from my perspective, is to ingratiate patrons of the, of the bed and breakfast to the area, and that's certainly what's happening here. People are bringing their dogs, they're walking across the streets of the conservation area, they're going into town, they're patronizing local businesses and restaurants. I mean, that's what a bed and breakfast does, and that's how this property is functioning. And I think it's consistent with the way the board has looked at this exact issue in the past.
Okay, well, I, I choose to disagree.
And I should have a, mindset of a question and a comment. In terms of precedent, we really only have that one, am I correct? We really only have one of the bed and breakfasts in town, which is the one at 72, am I right?
I believe that's the case, Mr. Sherman, yes, and it, and as Mr. Thielbar correctly pointed out, the, the bed and breakfast, the, is, is owner-occupied in the principal, and it is an extension, used to be the garage, that is also part of the bed and breakfast. But that portion, there, there are rooms in the principal dwelling as well. I believe that's the only one, I'm not aware of another.
Yeah, actually, I probably should have asked.
You, you meant, Mr. Passa mentioned, but go ahead, Mr. Sherman, sorry, I didn't mean to take your.
But that, so we don't have a long history, is that's all I'm getting at, is that if we had half a dozen of these, it might make the case easier for everybody, but we really only have the one. But I'm, I'm somewhat in, in agreement with Mr. Thielbar when I read the definition as well, mainly, and saw what it looks like, because what it's, not to get hung up on dining area, but it is, it's a nice little studio with a little kitchen and a little table, but most people, a bed and breakfast is the dining room, where you're going to go down with other guests, type of thing, so to me, it's a bit of a stretch, I mean, I'm just, I'm trying to wrap my head around it as well, but kind of what we do is, we have to really follow the definition here. So that, that has gotten me a little concerned, as well as the owner, the primary dwelling idea that it's in the house, that really isn't, it is not in the house, it's in the Word Barn.
Sure. No, look, these, these things are subject to interpretation. I think, I mean, really, the first filing was the basis of a recommendation from Mr. Eastman, who looked at this and of course knows better than the rest of us, like how this works and how it's interpreted historically, and I don't mean to put him on the spot, but I think it's important to note that his first instinct was go for a special exception for bed and breakfast. So, we are, admittedly, we have our perspective, certainly we appreciate the board's perspective, we're raising the issue because we have to, and we'll do the best we can to answer the questions.
Appreciate it. Any other questions for Mr. Passa? I know Mr. Anderson had a, a statement.
Just a couple of points to, you know, Justin did a great job describing all those things, but to, to the breakfast, breakfast aspect, just to address the Cheerios, and we do supply fresh eggs, honey, local tea and coffee, and we do have the designated dining area, which is very much part of it. And also, just to address that, it's, as you'll see in the video, it really would be quite challenging for someone to come onto our property, and not be part of, greeted by us, or part, I mean, we, we live there, you'll see in the video, we play basketball there, I pull my honey and jar my honey in, in the Word Barn, and, you know, you'll, you'll see, but just to, to make sure I'm able to highlight that. So I did want to say thank you very much for your time, on behalf of myself, my wife, and our kids, and everyone who gave up their, their time to be here tonight. We do thank you for your time, your work and your efforts, and recognize and remind everyone that you are volunteers, and you're giving up your own time to serve our town, and we, and we also want to say that we do recognize that the rules are the rules, and you merely, you merely are enforcing those regulations, so we greatly, greatly appreciate it, and think you guys do a great job. Also want to call out to your IT member, who we also think does a great job, because despite coming here 30 minutes early to get this video set up, it was a mad scramble, and he saved the day, and we do have a video to show you, which I really think is, is really important, just to show you that, that, basically do the sit walk and see how the layout and how it sort of incorporates into the property, and really well. At the last meeting, a question arose regarding the interpretation, as we're discussing right now, in regards to the definition of a bed and breakfast in the zoning ordinance, as it references that "such a use shall not be used for any other hospitality or business-related purposes." The question is whether that means the property or the bed and breakfast itself, and you weren't certain, and respectfully asked to continue the meeting so we could collect more information, which we greatly appreciated. But we ask you, consider for a second how either interpretation could fit, and given the key role that our short, short-term rental revenue plays in subsidizing the Word Barn's community events. Would it not behoove our community to interpret, to interpret this gray stipulation as regarding the being, the bed and breakfast itself, so that it may continue? Does the neighborhood and community support for our application not suggest that this is the correct interpretation? The bed and breakfast has clear and defined confines, its own entrance, its own parking, it has nothing to do with the Word Barn event, events. In fact, what it does do, not that we are disrespectful citizens or neighbors, but it keeps us in check. It helps ensure that we keep a tight control on volume, how long our events last, how late they go, and how frequent they are. After any inspiring community building and gathering event, it's one's natural instinct to hang out and not want it to end. Instead, Sarah and I politely move folks along who want to catch up with friends after events, saying, "We're so sorry, we have guests." We don't see what the, the negative would be with, would be with interpreting, interpreting the zoning ordinance to mean the bed and breakfast itself. This would not set a precedent, given it's allowed by special exception, a requirement the 1995 minutes reflect, as being to given, to give the chance for neighbors to weigh in, given the rural characteristics of our zone. Our neighbors have weighed in, and as has the entire community, we collected more than 2,000 signatures on a petition in support of this application. 2,000 people who stated that they have no issue with this application being approved. We openly stated that this was not being done to force your hand in any manner, but rather to give you the confidence that this is something that the community would like to see go forward. We constantly reminded folks that this, this was a positive petition, and no decision had been made, and that the town and Doug have been quite helpful in guiding us through the route we needed to take. Given this application seems to fit the criteria, even though, even that our own code enforcement officer thought it would, might be an easy process, and it appears to boil down to a coin toss interpretation of a zoning ordinance definition, I again ask, what would be the harm in interpreting, interpreting in favor of the application? That would certainly satisfy the will of the people and our community, and what would be the harm? With our nano brewery application, Anne said that she liked us as people, thank you, and what we did for the community, thank you again, but that the approval follows the property, not the people, which we agree. So the next owners could do something far different or awful with the approval. But that's not the case here. Bed and breakfasts are already listed as approved uses. The risk to the town and neighborhood is non-existent, but the risk to the future existence of the Word Barn, a clear positive force in the community, is huge. I know that a lot of you support the arts, Anne, I know in particular you have worked firsthand directly with the arts a lot, everyone knows that the arts needs subsidizing, and we, and it cannot survive on its own. Whether you are the Guggenheim or a local theater group, and regardless of how well-attended your events are, or how much people appreciate it, subsidy is needed to keep arts healthy and vibrant. We are of, me, Sarah, is an English schoolteacher, and I'm an arts promoter. Together, we organize community building events, work hard, and try to contribute back to our community in a greater amount than we take, all while being able to stay on top of our bills and pay our taxes. This is not an attempt to pull a fast one, a, a get-rich-quick scheme, this is a matter of keeping our heads above water, and continuing to offer community gatherings in a place we call home, via a use which has existed on our property in one form or another for decades with no complaint. Our subsidy is in the form of revenue from this pre-existing apartment on our property, an apartment that we did no work to, no construct, sorry, no construction, no alteration, and with, with a history of rental use. And this is not to say that our years of past use make it right, or that it automatically makes it allowed, rather to highlight that there is a demonstrated history of no negative impact to our community here. No issues, no loss of rural characteristic from the years of this rental unit. And the Airbnbs caused some confusion at the last meeting, which I'm pretty sure you resolved, or you, you did resolve quite nicely, thanks to you, Bob, for your explanation, but for the sake of clarity, we are indeed a bed and breakfast. We host guests, and provide them with our fresh eggs, our own honey, our local tea and coffee, but we do use the Airbnb as a reservation software platform. And why do we do that? It's because it lets us vet and screen our guests appropriately, and determine who we want to be on our property, because this is where we live, and this is where we raise our family. People have, people have to apply to stay here, and we look at their reviews, purpose of their trip, and then determine if we want them to stay on our family property or not. On the contrary, I can book, I can book a stay at a bed and breakfast, for example, in Rockport on my computer tonight, and they have no idea who I am or what my past history is. Doug Eastman also stated at the last meeting that Airbnbs are not allowed in Exeter because people were renting out their entire properties, not being present and parties were happening. people were renting out their entire properties, not being present and parties were happening, followed by a clear statement from Doug that this was not the case here, and the reason why, he guided us to this very special exception. And I trust Doug, and as I'm sure a lot of you do as well. He's been at this for a while and has a great handle of the dos and don'ts of zoning. So we appreciate your time, consideration, and wonderful work as volunteers, and hope that you'll consider approving our request, allowing us to continue as we have and others have in the past. Thank you.
Do any members have any questions for Mr. Anderson?
I know you mentioned that there's going to be a video, but I have a question about where the breakfast occurs. Is it in a dining room that you're present at, or is it in the apartment unit?
No, it's a dining area within the apartment. We're not present. We leave them their eggs, honey, coffee, tea, to make the breakfast at their will.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Passé?
Yeah, Ms. Chair, I think certainly we can proceed to the board deliberating the issue. Because of the overlap of the concerns and the nature of the property, I almost feel like, the video's like eight minutes. It really, maybe it'll give the board a sense for what we're talking about. And it's a case-by-case determination you're making. Does it make sense for this property? You're not setting precedent for the future. So if it pleases the board, we'll show the video. I understand we're kind of getting deeper into this analysis than we intended when we talked about this issue, it was just a threshold thing, but it's the board's pleasure. I mean, we're happy to play that if the board thinks it'll help.
My feeling is it's your, this is your presentation to make.
And we're in the special exception application right now.
We are. If you want to make this, it's your presentation. Now is the time.
Okay. Let's make the video.
Hello, everyone. Ben here. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share this short video of our property. We are at 66 Newfields, and this is where my family lives. I live here with my wife, Sarah, and our two kids, who are currently in there finishing up their remote schooling, and looking, very much looking forward to going back. This main part of the house was actually built in 1695, and then the L was added in the 1800s. And then this final section was added in the 1980s, when an extensive overhaul was done to the property. They added a three-bay garage, which you can see some of here, and they also took this structure all the way down to the ground. And they did a really nice job using the original barn timbers when they rebuilt it. But first, they put in a poured concrete foundation. They added steel I-beams to support this entire structure. It is not going to go anywhere. And they also gave it its own dedicated heating system, electric system, plumbing system, septic system, everything, self-contained. And we're not sure exactly why, or what the owner was intended for, but we kind of feel like it was maybe an art center, a private art center of sorts, because there is a photo darkroom here, there's a pottery area here. The gathering space that we use here is more set up for a dance recital area. And then, at the same time, in the 80s, they added an apartment with a full kitchen and a bathroom, which is, of course, which is why we're here. So before we go into that space, I just wanted to finish up with the main house here, just so you could see. This is our main door here, on the other side of this dogwood. And that's the entrance that we use. We use this walkway. We park in the driveway there, in front of the garage. The driveway is on the other side of this barn. These are my beehives, our solar panels that we installed when we first moved in. We're really happy to be powered by the sun. And speaking about the sun and being happy, this is my greenhouse, and I have my tomatoes and hot peppers in there started already, which I'm really happy about. To access it, I have to go through the barn. There are no exterior doors. I go through the lower level and enter there. This lower level I use primarily for my honey. I have some extraction equipment in there. It's where I jar the honey. This is a garage storage area, which is below the apartment, that I use that to store my hive boxes and other honey equipment as well. This is an exterior door that just goes to that lower level, and the lower level window. This is into the gathering space that we talked about before. And peeking through the trees there is the window into the apartment area. And that apartment, we rented out as soon as we moved in to a lovely tenant, before we switched it over to hosting guests, which we have really enjoyed. We have made some really great friends over the years and met some really fascinating people. Down here, you can see our self-serve egg box, where you can get some fresh eggs from our chickens. And then, we're going to, we're looking north up Newfields right now, and we have our forest, which is primarily hardwoods. The leaves aren't in yet, which, then we come up against the power line. You can see the pole there. And then there'll be more forest before you come across the first property, which is about three quarters of a mile up the road. This is the main barn, which, of course, is Rain's Farm Barn, which is in conservation. And then, probably our closest neighbor, you can kind of see through the trees down there. And then, if you look all the way down the road, that roadway right there goes into Captain's Way subdivision, which is located behind our house, excuse me, behind our property, but separated with quite a bit of forest, which is great. So let's go up the driveway, and I can give you an idea of what the back looks like. This is our little bench where we sit and wait for the bus during normal times. And of course, our driveway. I'll just give you one last look of the layout. There's a sign welcoming people back, or getting ready to. We are, can't wait for that. We have been closed for a long time. Anyways, we're going to go up the driveway here. Lilacs are starting to come in, which I'm happy about. Our holly could use some good fresh sun. And we have this wonderful flowering tree here, which really blocks this side of the barn. But this is the guest area. It's one big studio. We have the bed at this, by this window, and a sitting space by this window. These are my garden beds, where I spend plenty of time weeding. Probably put my snowmobile away, safe to do that now. This is our, where we park. It's a three-bay garage that I talked about, down the walkway into our main residence. I have these two parking spaces reserved for the guests. They generally don't use two, they use one, but I have two just to be safe. And I actually, I just painted those lines just to make it clear that they are, it is dedicated for our guests. This is the entrance. I'm going to back up some more here so you can get a better idea. The property is really nicely secluded by both the buildings and the forest, which is really nice. You can even notice the noise level change up here from the traffic. You can still hear it, of course. There goes a truck, but considerably different. But anyways, this is the entrance into the guest space. This is our gathering space here, and the entrance during normal times is through that door. And then, of course, our house is right there. And this is my truck, and my wife isn't home from teaching yet, but she parks there. Our camping van right there, we love to shoot hoops out here. And there's Ari's pink bike. And she actually does a lot of skateboarding out here. Anyways, we'll go and give you a little tour of the property. This is the entrance, and so this is the gathering space entrance, and this is for our guests. A lot of them bring dogs with them, so we have a little dog bowl. We are dog-friendly, and we have our dog as well with us on the property. So here we are. There is a full kitchen for people to enjoy. Some of our own honey, we leave out for folks. We also have some local tea that we offer folks. And also, we have a wonderful artist friend who made us calendars for every month, which we love. We're about to switch over to the April one. This is the sleeping area. It is one big room, as I mentioned before, but here's the window that looks out onto the road. And then, we have a little work area, and we have a guestbook where people leave us notes, which is really sweet. They also do that online as well. But we have a tips and ideas sheet here with some great places to go shopping and to go to restaurants downtown, some of our favorite spots we let people know about. Also, a place for them to sit and relax, and as well, to look out at the gardens. I really like leaving fresh flowers for folks. I've dried flowers in the wintertime, but picking flowers out of our gardens and leaving them for folks, as well as a note to welcome them here to our property. And then, this is the wind, so this is the bathroom, which is a nice open bathroom. But this is the window that looks down, or out, onto the road. It's a little noisier on this side, but, and then I'll just go back over here, and I think that's, you can see some of the original timberwork that they did, which is really nice. They did a nice job, but they really did outfit it as its own little setup. But there you have it. I won't take any more of your time. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I think we're back to the question of whether the board wants to address this question now, or should we finish the presentation on the special exception criteria and the rest of the presentation in that context? Happy to proceed as you think is best.
What I would like to do, and I will take, Attorney Passé, I will take your, I'll take your comment on this. What I'd like to do is, I'd like to, first, I'm going to, we do have an opinion for our legal counsel. I'd like to provide that to give you an opportunity to comment. I'd like to allow the public an opportunity to comment only on this specific issue, about whether this meets the definition of bed and breakfast, because the, just to ensure that the public has an opportunity, and then go into deliberative. Depending on where we come out on that issue, we would then reopen the public, or I think if this board finds that the application does not meet the definition for bed and breakfast, then there'd be no reason to go further. Do you agree with that?
I agree. That sounds good.
Okay. I want to make sure you have an opportunity, if you want to do more of a presentation, to do it.
And we will, if the board makes the determination that we fall within the language. Thank you.
So I'm going to poll the board. We do have an opinion from legal counsel. It is privileged, so we are certainly free to, but we are certainly free to waive that privilege and read it to the applicant. But I'd like, I'd like to hear the board's thoughts on that. My personal opinion is I'm fine to do that. I think it's only fair for the applicant to understand the legal interpretation and have a chance to respond.
I'm fine with it. Agreed.
Okay.
Myself as well.
No problem.
Okay. So I'm going to read the opinion, and then I will let you respond, Attorney Passé. This is an email from Laura Specter-Morgan, our town's legal counsel. "Doug, I'm following up on our conversation earlier today. As I understand the situation, there's a property in town which, in addition to a single-family home, has a barn on it. That barn is used as an entertainment venue for up to 50 people. There's also an apartment in the barn, which the owners have been illegally using for short-term rentals. They have agreed to cease that use until they obtain the required approvals from the town. The owners have applied to the ZBA for a special exception to operate a bed and breakfast in the barn for this apartment. Upon receipt of the application, the ZBA expressed concern that the proposal did not fall within the definition of B&amp;B. I tend to agree. A bed and breakfast is defined as the primary dwelling of an owner-operator that provides exclusively for the lodging of transient guests and whose posted rate shall include breakfast. A bed and breakfast shall not be used for any other hospitality or business-related uses. A bed and breakfast shall not have more than four rentable rooms and a dining area capable of accommodating the number of registered guests. Since the barn in which the apartment is located is also used as an entertainment venue, is used for another business-related use. Moreover, the apartment is not in the primary dwelling of the owner, and it is not clear that a bed and breakfast may rent full apartments, as opposed to single rooms with attached bedrooms. I would therefore agree that this proposal does not fall within the definition of bed and breakfast and would require a variance rather than a special exception." Anne, Attorney Passé, if you'd like to comment on that, feel free, although you have no compulsion to. I know you have made your point now.
Yeah, no, and I would rest on what I said. I think we're just, we have a divergent view of this. But I would say, and I will razz Laura about this the next time I talk to her, she, her interpretation is reading into the definition for bed and breakfast words that the town did not elect to put into it. There's no discussion about what room means. Her interpretation apparently is that because there's, you know, provision for food and dining and a bathroom and a room in one, that it doesn't meet the definition of bed and breakfast, because it's not a single room. But the regulation doesn't say that. The regulation doesn't say it has to be confined to only a bedroom. It says room. And again, the same point is true with regards to her interpretation of other business. Nowhere in the zoning ordinance does it say that a property that has a permitted bed and breakfast can't have another use on it. And I think the reason that is, is because the whole point of the ZBA is to look at specific properties and make determinations about whether or not uses which don't fall in line with the zoning ordinance are suitable on that property. And I would just suggest, it's the theme of everything I'll tell you for the rest of the night, this property, because of its unique circumstances, is totally able to accommodate what's being proposed. It's a unique set of circumstances. How many Word Barns do people know? I mean, it's a totally unique set of circumstances, and we're kind of at that crossroads. But I would just suggest, my interpretation of what Attorney Specter-Morgan said is actually reading into the language of the definition words that the town didn't see fit to adopt. And that is like, you can't do that. That's not the, that's not the way that regulatory interpretation works. That's my position.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, I'd like to open, I'd like to open it up to the public, to make comments for, against, or just with respect to the specific issue of whether this property meets the definition of bed and breakfast. Everyone will have an opportunity to speak generally about the use, about the variance. If we make a determination that it does meet it, you will all have another opportunity to speak to the other criteria of the special exception. And regardless, we have a second variance application that everyone will have an opportunity to speak to. If you could state your name and address for the record.
Okay, thank you. I'm Anna Grazer. I live at 8 Warren Avenue in Exeter. I'm a tremendous fan of the Word Barn, full disclosure. I also have tremendous respect for rules and regulations, and I understand there's a reason, I respect the reasoning behind these rules and the purpose of permitting. That's what helps us maintain a safe and cohesive community. That said, I don't think it's appropriate to look at this issue without considering that we're talking about a home and a family who lives in a home. And the moment you step off of Newfields Road, you are in their home. And any one of you who owns, whether it's a farm or a smaller lot in town, you may feel the same about your home, which is a domicile, whether it's a single structure or the encompassing area around it. And Sarah and Ben and their children are the most preeminent hosts I've ever met. It would be an honor to stay in their bed and breakfast or apartment, whatever you want to call it. And I can say I've had the honor of staying in their home, not in their home. It's like that, though, in their outdoor living room for outdoor Word Barn concerts, as well as indoor concerts. So I want to, that's what I want to underscore, is we're talking about a home, and I think that fundamentally drives our sense of what we hope to find in the best of bed and breakfasts. And I've stayed at many bed and breakfasts, many of which don't meet that criteria, many of which I would much rather have Cheerios over the food I was served, which brings me to my other two points, which is that regardless of what you want to find in your bed and breakfast experience as a guest, I think it's an overstep on the part of the board to try to determine or define where the guests must sleep in someone's domicile or home, A, and B, what they should eat or be served. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak specifically to this issue of the definition of bed and breakfast? definition of bed and breakfast?
Hi there. My name is Dave Sullivan. I live at 44 Hampton Falls Road. I have four daughters who are all teenage girls, and they would die to stay at this, have that as their room, if you will, what they're using as their bed and breakfast, if you will. By your definition, they would not live in my home if I was living there. And I think that is such a narrow thing. It's not a separate, they don't get a separate mail. It's the home. It's there. It's not in the primary residence where these folks sleep, but it's part of that home. And I could see the same argument being made here. I think that really such a narrow definition is exactly that. So I'm asking that we try to broaden the horizons a little bit with this unique situation. And that if you were to tell me, if I owned this place and if one of my daughters stayed in that, which they would love to do, that they didn't live in the same home that I did, I would take issue with that. And I think the same would apply here. I just think it's such a narrow... I mean, I understand the rules. I get that. But I would ask that you just try to broaden those horizons a little bit.
Thank you. Anyone else? We do have two attendees watching on Zoom. If anyone on Zoom would like to speak to this, again, to this specific issue, please raise your hand. If not, we are going to move on. Seeing no one, I will let Attorney Passe, if you have a quick comment, and then I think it's time to move to deliberative.
My very last point in this, Mr. Chair, thanks for the indulgence. There's an opportunity here to make an interpretation. That's what we're talking about. It's not clear, so you got to make an interpretation. My last point on this is that an interpretation consistent with what we're advocating for, that the board find that this is a bed and breakfast, I think is more consistent with the other uses permitted by special exception in the RU district, like childcare, daycare, social halls, clubs, lodges. ADUs are permitted in the RU with a special exception. So the effect of not finding that and of finding that this is a novel use that doesn't fall and isn't consistent with the definition of bed and breakfast is to require significant variance, which everyone knows is a higher standard. And that would make this use be much closer to things like the only other lodging-type use in the zoning ordinance, which is a hotel motel. I mean, this is not a hotel motel. We are much more in line with the bed and breakfast, the social hall, club, lodge that are permitted by special exception. And so it would be consistent. That interpretation, I think, would be consistent with the general intent of the zoning ordinance. So that's my last point. I appreciate the board's indulgence.
Thank you. Seeing no more public comments, I'm going to close the public session so we can deliberate on this specific issue. Anyone from the board wish to comment?
I would like to say that, you know, the one other case we've heard where there was short-term rental Airbnb use, the objection was very strong that there was no one there. Just strangers showing up whenever, doing whatever. And I really appreciate the fact that this is not the same thing, that you're there, you intensively use and live at this property, and people very much appreciate that. But that said, I feel like it just doesn't seem to fit the definition. The breakfast that's meant to be provided, I think, is meant to be provided as a cooked breakfast, you know, as a prepared breakfast, not ingredients. And I think that it's in a separate building, and it's been an apartment or a studio use. And it seems to me that fits more closely with what it is, and I think it's a nice use to have on the property, but I don't see it really fitting into the bed and breakfast definition of being in a home with the breakfast and the owners present, interacting with the people. I mean, I get that you guys do that there, but again, that's how you manage it. But somebody could just pull in and have paid online, and you might not ever interact with them if it was a different owner. And we're talking about a use that will go with the land. So I do have trouble seeing this as meeting the definition. And I'm sorry for that because it sounds like you have a great place, but it feels like it does not fit. And adding the town attorney's interpretation, it kind of weighs a little bit more in that direction to me.
I think my thoughts are pretty clearly already stated.
Right. I actually agree with Ms. Davies, the way she described that. It's several things. It goes with the land. It's always in the back of my mind, that that use will go with the property. And you may be doing it correctly, but somebody else may take that use and do it not as correctly as you might do it. But it also does go back to a bed and breakfast definition. And even without the attorney, I mean, just reading what the definition is without whatever she wrote extra onto that that was read, it is a primary dwelling. It's in the home. And you'd have to say that the word barn, that structure, is where you live, but it's not where you live. You live on the property. And I know it sounds like we're splitting hairs and it's nuanced, but at the end of the day, we're the ones that have to follow the guidelines. And the more you stretch them to something that seems like it might be the right thing, I think that gets you down on a slippery slope. So I have to go by the definition. That's the only, if I'm looking at this, is the actual definition. And it really doesn't, it doesn't fit the true definition of bed and breakfast.
Martha, did you have any comments?
I tend to agree with what has already been said. I frankly was a little surprised or puzzled by Doug's recommendation to go this route as opposed to an accessory dwelling unit, which to me is the more obvious way to go. And I was just surprised. I do feel that when you go to a bed and breakfast, that the breakfast is served to you in another location. So I tend to agree with the other comments that have been made so far.
Yeah, I guess, there's no definition of breakfast, so I don't have as much, I tend to agree that it's...
There's no definition of bed either.
But I do, I actually am more focused on the other piece of this, which is, I agree with Attorney Passe in that there is no prohibition on, to special exceptions on a lot, generally, in the zoning ordinance. But there is in the definition of bed and breakfast, and that's where I'm getting stuck. It's the primary dwelling of an owner-operator that provides exclusively for the lodging of transient guests and whose posted rates shall include breakfast. I think it's that exclusively. That definition is what presents other uses. In this case, another commercial use allowed by special exception. And that's where I'm really getting stuck. I will say, if you look at the definition of dwelling as well, that is defined as any building or portion thereof designed and used exclusively as the residence or sleeping place of one or more persons. So I don't think this counts as the primary dwelling, which is really a shame because it doesn't make any sense to me, but it is the language of the ordinance. I don't know that I agree with it, but it's the definitions that we have. And so I tend to agree with the rest of the board in that it just doesn't fit the definition of a bed and breakfast.
Put closer to the issue, would you accept the motion?
I would accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion. I'm sorry, I'm making all the motions tonight. Is that...
I'm saving my voice.
Are you?
I'm voting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Why don't we have, why don't we have you not vote on this one? And Martha, would you like to vote? Have you vote on this application?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to deny the special exception request for Application 21-5, Case Number 21-5, on the grounds that it does not meet the definition of a bed and breakfast as per the Exeter zoning ordinances.
I'd second.
Any comments on the motion? Seeing none. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Aye. Given that the board has found that this use does not meet the definition of bed and breakfast, and therefore fails the special, the first criteria, the special exception, not finding it, that the use be permitted, we've also found that the special exception application fails. So if you would like, Mr. Passe, to move on to the variance application?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, that sounds good. One just procedural thing, certainly a lot of what we've already presented, particularly Mr. Anderson's letter and the video, I mean, for the sake of completion, we can do it again, or we can just incorporate it into the rest of the application.
I would certainly, I would encourage you to incorporate it in. We've all seen it, and it's relatively correct. Thank you.
Then the only other thing that I would suggest, and if it pleases the board, it's slightly different than what I would normally propose, but I have 20 seconds worth of additional introductory remarks just about the property, the nature of the property, which now you've seen. I would like, if it's okay with the board, to have the public comment then before I do the variance criteria analysis, just because I think a lot of what they're going to say and talk about go to things like spirit of the ordinance, public interest, substantial justice, those things that are so critical. So if it's a little out of order, I appreciate that. I'm happy to just go through the criteria now and then have the public comment, but...
I think if you actually would go through the criteria, I think that's the cleaner way to do it. We're going to hear from the public, and I will certainly invite you back up to respond after the public has gone, if you want to reiterate any of the points that you made.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So very quickly, as the board is now intimately familiar with, we're talking about a big property here. It's a unique property. It's five and a half acres. The topography of the property actually goes up from the street. That's why you saw Ben sort of walking up the driveway. The use on the property, aside from the residential use, which is clearly obvious, is indiscernible from the street, and it's indiscernible from surrounding properties. Because if you look at the evidence that we provided in the packet to include the tax map and the aerial photographs with the various depictions on them, you see that this property is surrounded primarily by the subdivisions, open space from next door. So it's open space from the adjacent subdivision. Across the street is conservation land. It's quite a ways until you get to an actual residential property. And of course, the uses that we're talking about, in this case, the short-term rental use that we're seeking approval for, but also the word barn use, that activity happens on the other side of the word barn. So with the topography, the nature of the building and its size, and then the actual entrance to the building on the other side, the use is just indiscernible. So I think that's an important thing to reference at the top here. As Ben talked about, this building itself in the 80s was taken down to the ground and rebuilt, and that's the status that it is today. That apartment was built at that time. The basic chronology was that when the Andersons bought the property in 2013, they continued the long-term rental. And then in 2018, in the spring of 2018, right after they had permitted the word barn, it occurred to them, really two things, that the short-term rental use was more compatible with the existing word barn use on the property, and was also more financially lucrative for them than long-term rental. And it just made sense because it's less impact than a long-term renter, and so that's the direction that they went in. They operated it as a short-term rental for two years. There were 471 guests during that time. As we detail in our application, they received glowing reviews from Airbnb because of the sensitive approach that they've taken to this, as the board, I think, has already acknowledged. And then, of course, upon receipt of the notice from the town, that use stopped, and here we are seven months later. So that's the overview. I think there's a robust factual history before the board. I think the board is very well aware of the nature of this property. And so unless there are questions, I will go into the variance criteria. Okay? So as the ZBA is aware, the Supreme Court in New Hampshire has said that boards of adjustment should take the first two prongs of the variance criteria together, and they are whether or not the variance will be contrary to the public interest and whether the spirit of the ordinance is observed. And the test really in both those contexts is whether or not the proposed variance will unduly and in a marked degree conflict with the zoning ordinance. You know, mere conflict is enough, as the board is aware. Of course, there's a conflict with the zoning ordinance. That's why we're here. But the courts say, look to the language of the zoning ordinance where you can. So the court also says, when you answer these two questions about the spirit of the ordinance and the public interest, you should consider two basic questions, whether or not the proposal is going to alter the essential character of the neighborhood, and whether or not the proposal is going to threaten the public health and safety. So just looking first here, we're seeking a variance from Section 4.2, which is the use table. And while there's no stated purpose of the use table, I would suggest that the point of 4.2 is to make sure that appropriate uses are cited in rural districts by virtue of the nature of those districts, and that there not be a compromise to the rural character, particularly in a district like the RU, which is really supposed to be rural. And I would just state foundationally that in this case, the variance is not contrary to these foundational purposes. And in fact, I think the variance advances those foundational purposes. And I think that's why in 2017, this board found that the word barn was appropriate for the property because of how insulated it is, because of the topography, because of the nature of the abutting properties, because of the wooded buffer. I think it was those types of considerations that the board found, this isn't inconsistent with what the RU district is because this is a unique property. So I would just submit at the top that strictly interpreting this ordinance to prevent the proposed use is not advancing the point of the zoning ordinance. The point of the zoning ordinance is have compatible uses, don't compromise the rural character of the area. This application is going to do neither of those things. And certainly, we would suggest that the essential character of the neighborhood is not going to change. As we've said, this particular apartment has been in use for decades. For decades, it was a long-term rental. Long-term rentals by their nature are more impactful. There's more traffic. There's more drain on town services. What's being proposed is a short-term rental. It's indiscernible from the road, as you saw. Nobody driving by and nobody on any surrounding property would be able to discern that there is any type of additional activity or use happening on the property. So the character of the neighborhood is going to stay because the property is going to appear the way it's appeared for decades into the future. And then we'd also say that there's no threat here to the public health and safety. It's a very minimal impact in the context of traffic on a property that already has a permit for the more commercial nature of the word barn use. Certainly, we're fine with any condition of approval of this variance request, that we update the DOT driveway permit to reflect the additional use of the property, which we're happy to do. But more importantly, when you think about public interest, this proposal really supports the public interest because it's bringing people to Exeter. As Ben and Sarah would say, what they have found their clientele to be are really people coming from the South, Connecticut, New York City, and heading up to places in Maine mostly, Acadia. And Exeter, it turns out, is right in between those two places, and it's a perfect place to stop. And when those people come, as you saw in the video, there's a little list of places where they should go and patronize in Exeter. So I would suggest not only is there no threat to the public health or safety, it advances the public health and safety and the public interest in general, because it's helping patronize places in Exeter, which is important always, but particularly important right now. So those are the first two prongs on that analysis. And on the analysis we provided in writing, we would suggest that those are satisfied. The third prong is whether substantial justice is done by granting the variance. And the test is whether any loss to the individual that is not outweighed by gain to the general public is an injustice. I mean, to satisfy this criteria, we've got to prove that the public isn't gaining something by denying the variance request. And we would submit that that's the case here. We point to the petition. There are 2,000 signatories to the petition. We're aware of no objection at all from any of the abutters or the neighborhood about the nature of the use. And I think that's due primarily to the fact that it's so minor. So we don't discern any benefit to the public of denying the variance. Certainly, there is a huge benefit to Sarah and Ben, and that's, as you've heard, this is funding the word barn on some level. And as we put in our application, you know, there's a real question about whether or not if they cannot continue to use this apartment as a short-term rental, whether there's viability in the property long-term or with the word barn. And that's not in the law, a consideration that constitutes a hardship or anything like that, but it is a reality, and it's the facts. And when you consider sort of the de minimis nature of the use that's being proposed, I think it weighs heavily in favor of finding that substantial justice is accomplished by granting the variance. The fourth prong is whether or not values of surrounding properties are diminished by... by the proposal. We would suggest that they're not, for the reasons we already stated. This is very insulated property. We've provided a professional opinion from Ally Goodwin of Keller Williams, who says not only will there not be an impact, but that if this were permitted on the Andersons' property, their property value would increase. Common sense tells us that when that happens, surrounding property values increase as well. And again, I think this project enjoys the sort of wide, almost unanimous support from the people who are closest to it in the neighborhood and the surrounding areas. So I would suggest that fourth prong of the variance criteria has been satisfied. And then last, everybody's favorite, the hardship analysis. And the question here is whether literal enforcement of the provisions of the zoning ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. And the test is whether, due and owing to special conditions of the property that make it unique when compared to properties around it, there's no substantial nexus, there's no logical connection between the point of the zoning ordinance and its application to this property. And so foundationally, as I already said, in the context of the public interest and spirit of the ordinance prong, strictly enforcing this provision of the zoning ordinance is not going to advance the point of the zoning ordinance. The point of the zoning ordinance, in this case, is to ensure rural character and not compromise that character, ensure compatibility of uses. We're talking about a property that has already permitted the word barn. We think that's because it's uniquely situated, and the board found that to be the case in 2017, when it granted the ordinance, granted the variance. But certainly, the property is unique compared to other properties around it. It's five and a half acres, it's bigger than the surrounding residential properties, and it's buffered by open space from the adjacent subdivision and by conservation land. It also has a wooded buffer around the entire perimeter, and it's got a topography that helps completely hide and mask from the view of the road, the activity of the word barn, and the activity of the proposed short-term rental. So those special conditions really make it illogical to enforce this zoning provision on this property, because the property has existed and utilized this short-term rental for decades without any issues, any accidents, any complaints. It really is the best evidence this board could have to find, yeah, well, this use doesn't detriment the area, it doesn't detriment the property, and whether it's the Andersons' using it or someone else. Remember, I mean, this was a long-term rental long before the Andersons ever purchased the property, for decades. That's the best evidence that this board can have to conclude that applying the zoning ordinance in this context to prevent this use doesn't make sense. And I would just suggest, in closing, that really is the point of the ZBA. The ordinance is what it is, the words are what they are. The point of the ZBA is to determine, does it make sense to strictly enforce this provision under these circumstances? And we just think that all the evidence really resoundingly suggests that that's not the case, that this use is appropriate, it's consistent, and we should just come into compliance. And I think that'll be the last that you hear from the Andersons. So thank you very much for your time and for your consideration. I'm happy to answer questions, otherwise I will stop talking and sit down.
I have one minor question. I just think you may, I may have misheard, or you misspoke, but I just want to clarify. This was a long-term rental for decades.
Correct.
It has only been short-term, used for short-term rentals since 2019?
Eighteen.
2018, okay.
If I missed, I apologize, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I was clear on the record. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excuse me, did I hear you say that you were going to update the permit for the driveway with the state, or have it reviewed?
To the extent that we get this approval, then our obligation will be to advise the DOT of the slight change in use to be incorporating this additional use. And then certainly, as a condition of approval, we could verify and make sure Doug sees that after it's done.
Yes, because one condition here says, this permit is for access to a single-family resident and a small, irregular literary and music-focused gathering facility known as the word barn. The word barn averages one event per week with approximately 30 attendees. Any further development or subdivision will require reapplication for a driveway permit. And I think you do have more than one event a week.
So there's certainly a long story, Ms. Pennell, that we could tell you about, the conversations that have occurred with DOT. I think notes were transposed wrongly on that permit. I think what was actually discussed between the Andersons and DOT at the time that that permit was issued was not accurately reflected. But I think that the Andersons are also in the process of ensuring that that issue is completely resolved, and as I said, are happy with a condition of approval that would require them before any CO is issued or any permit finalized in this context, to show, here's our updated permit with DOT.
Well, this was just a copy of an email sent from our town planner.
Right.
And so it just says, can you confirm the attached permit is accurate with respect to current land uses as described in condition number one? And this was signed by James Hewitt. So I just, that's all I know, so I just want to find out.
We appreciate it, and that's what we're referencing. We're aware of that same correspondence, so that's why we're referencing it affirmatively in the application. Thank you, though.
I think Martha and I have been thinking along the same lines. I had that open in front of me as well, which was the same note, which is the application from the DOT. I wasn't going to mention it, but you opened the door by mentioning DOT, so I'll bring it up. Point number three says, other access to the highway from the premises is to be prevented. And I would note that that is a condition that has not been met by the applicants. And there is consistently a sign that says overflow parking or additional parking. My impression, my interpretation of reading this is that that entry was to be closed. So I would hope that, I'm sorry to sick, apologies to any employees of the state of New Hampshire who might be seated near me at the table, I don't want to sick you on DOT, but I think you need to respect the fact it's a state road and follow the rules.
And what I would say...
Following the rules is kind of the theme here.
Sure. No, we, and look, we appreciate it, and we're trying to be as transparent as possible, is why we affirmably wrote into our application, this is an issue out there, I've been in touch with Doug, it's come to our attention, we're addressing it. The reality about that provision, Mr. Pryor, is that the Andersons were in the process of updating their permit to allow that, because that's a longstanding farm road that's been there forever. In the process, we're going here, and then we're continued 40 times, and now here we are, and it's like, instead of going to DOT finalizing this, you know, we're going to hope for an approval, and then when we go, we're going to clear it all up, we're going to get with Doug, we're going to show him, this is the updated DOT permit, we're functioning in coherence with all requirements. So that's why we want, I mean, we're asking for a condition of approval to require us to make that extra vetting, so that everybody's happy.
So let me ask, see if I can, you can answer a question that perhaps you did already. You make a valid point that...
I do?
Yes. That the accessory building has been used for long-term rental for years. While sitting here, watching these things go by, I've never seen a request for having an accessory building converted to a accessory dwelling unit. It would have been a walkover a year and a half ago, and they could have put long-term rental back in that unit and having, generating income. So the only reason that I'm hearing is, they want to do a transient guest by definition in the rules, in that environment. And you heard my smartass comment about how, what that would end up being is a one-unit motel room. Right now, the accessory structure is not approved for any sort of residential use. There are many people in town already who have accessory dwelling units. Two of them are sitting to my left. If you are successful in getting a variance to allow transient ownership in a structure that, transient...
Guest.
Guest.
Yeah.
In a structure that's not even approved for any residential use of any kind, anybody who has an accessory unit that's approved for long-term rental is at least one step ahead of where you are now. And if we allow you to receive a variance to allow the transient residence, we'll have absolutely no basis for rejecting that same request from everybody who has an accessory building in all of Exeter. And what that means is, we will in effect be legalizing Airbnbs. And I don't think we even have the authority to make a change of that magnitude, of that much impact to the whole community.
I appreciate your point. I disagree with your assertions, Mr. Thielbar. Transient occupancy in a bed and breakfast, if the Andersons' proposal incorporated, apparently, a bedroom in their house, then transient guests would be permitted on the property pursuant to a special exception, because they would be a bed and breakfast that's allowed in the RU zoning district. This board doesn't set precedent, it can't set precedent, because foundationally, every question that comes before the board is pertaining to the uniqueness and the qualities of the property. There isn't another word barn in town, and there isn't another property like the Andersons' in town. There are a lot of unique, special circumstances. So this idea that this would be opening the floodgates, it would be opening the floodgates to another identically situated property. And I guess my point is, word barn is unique, the property is unique, long-term rental doesn't make sense because of the word barn. I think someone even mentioned at the April meeting that there was this question about, well, someone could hear the stage setup or something through the walls, and as I pointed out in our application, that's really a marketing thing for the Andersons to deal with, not really a concern for the town. But that's the reason, I mean, it makes much more sense to be attracting people to the site to stay for a show, or attracting people to the site who are going to stay for a short time and not be living there long-term, because just for the nature of the property, that doesn't make, that doesn't make sense.
So for my, from my perspective, the transient, in a bed and breakfast, they're in the home with the homeowner. So that is a level of supervision that's different than with a unit in a separate building. But from my perspective, the commercial nature of the use makes it more suited to a transient use than a regular residential neighborhood. Is there a way to tie the two things together, so that if one goes away, the other has to go back to being a normal, long-term rental? I feel like the objection to short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods is the lack of control, and the element of having a lot of activity on this property makes it more acceptable to have short-term rentals on the property. Can that, is that something we can entertain tying the two things together? Because like we said, this goes with the property, so I don't want to say, sure, this is fine to do, because it's the way the property's operating right now. If one of the uses goes away, maybe the other should go away too, and become more traditional...
Accessory dwelling.
Accessory dwelling unit, or just a second unit. I mean, I'm not opposed to them having that as another unit. I just think that the short-term rental thing bothers people in a strictly residential setting for the lack of oversight.
I think that's a keen observation, that makes sense. I mean, I'm, you know, trying not to over-legalize this, I'm just wondering about the enforcement mechanism. I think it's a good idea, but the question is, do we...
Conditions have to be enforceable.
Yeah, the conditions have to be enforceable, and I'm sure the Andersons, with some time with me, we could think about that and figure out the best way to do it. I just want, I would want to get it right. Would it be a condition of approval, which can be enforced by Doug and the town, as any other condition of approval? Because I'm seeing Ben's head do this a lot. I assume that that would be acceptable to them, that we, I would want an opportunity to talk to them, but I mean, I think that that makes sense, marrying them together on some level. You know, if the, if the word barn use was abandoned, you know, as a condition of approval, if the word barn use, you know, site-specific ZBA case number is abandoned on the property, so too will be the short-term rental.
Well, can I clarify something? Is, are you, Laura, is your, your point to tie it to the word barn use, or to tie it to the, because I heard two things, or is it to tie it to the use of the main home as a principal dwelling, to keep the residents there and some control? Keep the owners there, I mean. Is it owner occupancy, or word barn, or both?
I hadn't thought of it that way, but I think both. But as Rick was pointing out, many homes have an accessory dwelling unit, and not every neighborhood wants to welcome a short-term rental situation into the neighborhood, just because there's an accessory dwelling in it. So I guess I was thinking more of the commercial nature of the word barn in the same building, because of the unique situation of the way the property's set up, that might be more suitable than every single accessory dwelling unit being able to accommodate transients.
Well, one way to think about it is that, let's say the Andersons someday sell the property, and is there something that we're trying to prevent happening that by giving a variance for this use might be possible? In other words, is there anything in our granting the variance request that is tied specifically to the way in which this family operates this business?
Well, I think the word barn use is a very extremely unique and, you know, obviously beloved use, but it's not necessarily something that anybody could do.
But it is a viable, then, arts, but it is a viable arts venue, and it could be sold as such.
Would there be...
Single-family home with arts venue and apartment.
I think that the single-family use is the primary use on the property, it's what the zoning allows for, and that these, I'm going to say that word barn is a special exception, I'm forgetting, or is it a variance?
It was a variance.
It was a variance. These two variances would, are the thing that...
Well, the B&amp;B use does require an owner-operator, so it could not, if they sell it, it already has an owner-operator. But what we're giving the variance is going to be called for bed and breakfast, so it's still, still under the...
Is it a bed and breakfast, or is it a variance for a short-term rental?
Okay, okay, okay. Apologies, apologies. You're right.
The whole idea...
Yep, 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 you're right.
The variance on this request is legalizing an Airbnb in something other than a real B&amp;B or a hotel.
Right.
So I have a question then. Well, then, even though they say we don't create precedent, I think in a way we will, because once, right now, the town of Exeter is not allowed for Airbnb, is that correct?
Correct.
So once, if we do this, I mean, we're all sort of conjecturing, once, if we were to grant this variance, to some degree, it does open, it's back to what Mr. Thielbar said, it does open up that opportunity for more people to say, hey, that worked for that situation, how about mine?
And there's another reason why, if it were tied to the commercial use, it might be an argument...
It's important to remember that every single variance...
Only one person talk at a time, please.
Every single variance that this board approves, then that same analysis would apply. I need a variance for less frontage on my lot because of whatever unique circumstances, it's an old lot, whatever. So I only have 90 feet or 100 feet of frontage is required. By that analysis, anybody in town would say, I can get a frontage variance? No. At the end of the day, it comes down to the nature of the property, and that's why you can't, I mean, that's why the Supreme Court says, there is no such thing as precedent, because there's not another property in Exeter that could, that is as unique under these circumstances as the Andersons' property, and that's why it works.
Well, you just finished giving a presentation on why it didn't need to be in the homeowner, because we'd already done it in two other places in town. And you just said to me, oh, I can't possibly do that, because the court says I can't. And you just said to me, oh, I can't possibly do that because the court says I can't.
You know, Mr. Thielvar, I'm pointing out the way that this board has historically looked at something.
All I'm, all I'm saying is you're arguing two sides of the same issue depending on which it supports your view.
I disagree. I'm pointing at what the zoning ordinance permits in the RU district, which are things like child daycares, lodges, fraternal organization, bed and breakfast. And I'm pointing out to the totally unique and minor nature of the use here. And we're pointing out that it's existed for, for better or for worse, for 40 years on the property. It's a de minimis impact.
It has, it has not existed for 40 years. That's the point that I'm trying to make here. You could come, if you had come in with a request to have an auxiliary
Close. Accessory.
Building that was long-term rental. It would have been a walk-through.
And the odd thing is that that use is far more impactful than the use that's being proposed. That's.
You're telling me, you're telling me that. You're telling me that. I am not supposed to talk.
No, I just, I mean, it's a valid, I get your question, but just by, by virtue of the number of days in a calendar year, a long-term person lives in a house and leaves the driveway every day and comes back to the driveway, they're, they're drained on municipal service. We're talking about people who come for three or four nights, less than that.
Can I drill into that a little bit, actually? Because you said that a few times, that this is less impactful. And I understand where you're coming from. But what we haven't, what I haven't seen presented is, you know, what, how much use does this apartment get? I mean, yes, it is not getting used 365 days out of the year. But transient use is a different impact than, you know, long-term use. You have a person living there caring, theoretically caring for the, the space, which is different than having 300 people coming through or 180 people coming through. And so how much, just to stick to the facts, how, how much use does this unit get on a monthly, annual basis roughly?
Sarah Ben can answer, but in our application, we state in the two years, there are 471 guests.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that mean 71 days of rental?
No, those are the number of guests that, that, that came. And I'm sure there was a 98.7%, you know, 7% occupancy. So Mr. Anderson could state with better specificity the, the length of time. Do you want to?
So it's generally, but that answers my question, which is that it's generally filled almost the entirety of the year then, if it's 97% occupancy.
It depends on when it's being offered. So that's the question for, for Mr. Anderson.
If, if we grant the variance and it could be occupied 365 nights a year?
Well, but I'm trying to get a sense of what's being done now because the argument has been made that it is less impactful than a long-term use. So actually, if I, if Mr. Anderson, if you could answer that question.
Certainly. Sorry. The, the, we were actually quite surprised that the, we found that the niche was for people looking for an idyllic country getaway. That and the combination between being halfway located between New York City and Acadia Park in Maine, and people were looking for a, a, a place to stop and rest before traveling on their way. And these are people that were going downtown to eat supper at our favorite restaurants, visiting shops.
Understood. I'm just trying to get a sense of how many, it's 400, and I apologize for missing this in the application, but it's, it's 400 plus, 471 guests total. So let me ask specifically, is that, is that total guests, meaning two people may stay there and that's included in the number? Or is that 471 visits?
That's 471 guests staying on the property. So as Justin said, our occupancy rate was roughly 98.5%.
What does that mean?
Nights of the, of the year.
So it's occupied full, essentially occupied all the time?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, these, these people, this is our home. This is our family. We vet, no, we, we, with due respect, we vet these people and make sure that they are very great guests and care for the property, care for their environment. And that's the really neat thing about that opportunity to vet those people, that we're not welcoming people in who are bad guests or are going to misuse our property or our town. These are people who are, have a great track record.
Yeah, no question. And it, it's clear that it's very popular and that it's, you know, it's well-received. But it does sound like it's, it is the equivalent in terms of use as a, having a, having a long-term tenant.
It's not less impact.
Excuse me, I didn't quite understand about the occupancy. Are you saying that this is occupied basically 365 days a year?
Yes. And it comes with the benefit, and I know I've, I made this point before of, you know, the impact that it does have is on our local economy, is that these people, unlike a, a long-term renter who only goes out to eat maybe once a month or, or so, these people are going out to eat every night and they are shopping in our shops and filling up their gas tank. Its impact is on our local economy, which, and also I should point out, the, the greater impact, because we've kind of forgotten about that point, is the Word Barn. This, this is the biggest subsidy of our offerings and which makes our community arts gatherings, events make sense, which allows us to do it. And that's why we're here and have asked these people to come and join us in, in this application because without it, we don't know what we're going to do. And it, the whole Word Barn model completely falls apart and, and doesn't make sense. So it contributes to our local economy, but it contributes to our quality of life by directly supporting those events.
Is Airbnb the only way you get people to come?
We do. Because of that vetting, because we were raising our family there and we don't want you to book it without us knowing who you are, what your experience has been like at other places, because a host will rate you, your experience confidentially and you will rate the host's experience after you stay. And nobody sees either until you both review. And if you don't review, it will still appear on your site. Some, our guests will rate us and, and we rate them. And so I can see your track record from other hosts to say, you left everything in incredible order and you were such a pleasant person and had a cute little puppy. And, and so we say, well, this is someone that we would like on our property. And if some, somebody will get a review saying they left the place as a mess and we're like, we're not interested in those people. So that is the platform we use.
And it's an exclusive platform. I mean, Airbnb is, is basically your rental agent.
I suppose. I mean, we use it, we do use it exclusively, but, but that's not, I mean, no, actually, you know, we've had other guests stay on the property in the past. But that, but yes, we use it because of that vetting mechanism. It's the most powerful tool there is out there for that purpose because we live and reside on the property.
So in your, in the copy of your ad in Airbnb, you imply that because the structure is so private that they could actually come and visit and never see you or you them?
No, we, we describe it as being in a very idyllic country setting with access to wonderful hiking trails, a really beautiful and quaint downtown with exceptional restaurants.
Yes, you say all those things.
Yep, butting conservation land. And we also highlight the fact that we are an arts gathering space and that there is a good chance that there may be an event during the time when they are there. We make it, we, we make no impression that they are going to be all alone, unattended to or on, you know, undisturbed. But we actually highlight that so that they're aware because we actually found that the we actually thought the niche was going to be people coming to stay and go to a show. I mean, how great is that? And that is not the case. It was people looking for an idyllic place to get away. And discovering the events, they see that luckily for us as a bonus because it is on that short-term basis. It's quaint. If you live there for 12 months, it's not so quaint anymore coming through your wall.
Could I ask Doug a question? I'm a little unclear about Airbnb. Why aren't they allowed in town? Or are they? Not?
No.
And why?
We're battling with that right now. I think we need to come to grips with this as other towns have, Portsmouth being one. We are occasionally, and it seems to be more and more, writing violations of Airbnbs. I've just dealt with two this past week, had to send out cease and desist on two properties in Exeter because they were reported by their neighbors that they were having people people coming in and out of their house all hours of the night, not knowing who these people are. The neighbors don't know who they are. Maybe the people that own their house know who they are, obviously, because they're vetted through the Airbnb. But at this point, there's nothing in our ordinance that says that you can do that. So I am enforcing that. And there are, there are other options. There's, well, the bed and breakfast, I guess that doesn't work. So we tried, we could try accessory dwelling units. We can do, they can do conversions. You know, break your house up into a couple of units and rent them out, maybe just not one, but two. And maybe that's an option. Do a conversion. I mean, there are other options, but as far as Airbnbs, we do not permit them in the town of Exeter.
It's due to the technology that, that makes it so easy to do this and the ordinances haven't caught, caught up. And so we don't really have a, a way to allow that in town. And it's been a big issue and the state has not stepped forward and, and legislated anything to deal with it and different towns are struggling with it. I know Conway only allows it now in the commercial district. They have probably 1,500 people, people who own properties that have been renting them out short-term and all of a sudden they can't do that now. So it's, it's an issue that's causing turmoil and we don't have, we haven't addressed it in our zoning ordinance yet. So.
So.
Unless you have a point directly to respond on this issue, I know that Ann Sermon had a, had a question.
So I can wait. Sure.
Ann.
Mine's not really about Airbnb. Mine's more about the timeline of, because I want to get back to how dependent you are on this short-term rental because it's from what, from the memo. Since 2019 is when you started using the air, the short-term rental, because the old, the long-term rental ended in 2018. So 2019 is when the short-term starts and it's now it's 2021. So it looks like the Word Barn was functioning from 2017. Yeah, there were several years there where you didn't have the short-term rental. So I guess I'm trying to get to the point of how dependent financially that is. Because as far as I can tell, the Word Barn is extremely successful. So that, so didn't it stand on its own merit before this? That's all, just it seems like.
I'm not sure that's relevant.
Feel free to answer that. I will say that the, you know, the, the, you know, personal hardship or the business model is, is, is not a factor. So, but the, the question was asked, so please go ahead and answer it.
I'm only asking it because.
Keep the discussion moving.
Right.
Understood.
I, I know it's no surprise, the point that I made earlier, you know, that all arts, good or bad art requires subsidy. Again, whether you're the Guggenheim or the local theater troupe, it needs subsidy. And the fact is that our rental unit provides the most significant and substantial and crucial amount of funding for, for our operation.
What do we do whether you're a long-term or short-term? At some point of rental, you have income, right?
Unfortunately, a long-term rental is not viable in our space, again, for, for the simple reality that it's quaint to hear a concert or a poetry reading next door for, for one night to stay. You can tell all your friends about it later of how wonderful that was, but after a month of shows, you're, you're, you're out. You're gone.
Chairman, if there are no more questions, if you want to make a comment and then like to open it up to the public and keep it moving.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I was just, this application is plagued by the nomenclature that surrounds the word Airbnb. I mean, people think Airbnb and they think of what the problem really was in Conway in many places, at least the alleged problem, what people are objecting to, which is investment companies coming in, scooping up a bunch of properties and exclusively renting them for, to out-of-town guests at desirable places like Conway where you can, you know, there's summer activity and there's winter activity. The, the thing here, and the important thing to reference about Mr. Eastman, Mr. Eastman finds out when there are complaints. And then he has to file a notice of violation. We confirmed with Mr. Eastman that the complaint, which is the basis of his December letter, was not from an abutter or someone who didn't like the use on the property, it's from somebody else. So that's an important distinction. There's, and I've seen this in many towns, people, is it hotels who are down and out and not having the residency that they need and they're filing these, these, you know, notices, these objections in towns where there are a lot of Airbnbs. Someone over here just pulled up Airbnb. There's 32 properties apparently in Exeter that are Airbnbs that are offered for Airbnb right now. So I think Ms. Davies' point about, and I think what Ben just said, there's a, there's a financial component of this, there's the inconsistency of a long-term rental on that unit and the Word Barn use next door. And so maybe there is a good reason to put these two things together, to have as a condition of approval in this case, the, an idea, a requirement that should the Word Barn use lapse, this lapses too. Because they're connected and they make sense together, but maybe apart, it's not as, not as close. And I think that's something that we could be, it could be enforced like anything else. I mean, if someone else comes and owns the property, the description for what the Word Barn is, is in the application. I think I cited the precise way that the Word Barn use was defined in 2017. It's, it's Doug's job, it's the town's job to make a determination as to whether or not that that use is being exceeded or it's not consistent any longer with what was approved. And any follow-on owner would have that same issue. The town's going to enforce what the approval was. And if there was a condition of approval in this case that required it to be, to exist only so long as the Word Barn existed, I think that's a way to sort of satisfy all these disparate concerns, which are legitimate and we're trying to navigate. So that's all.
If there are no more questions, anyone, members of the public who'd like to come and, and speak on this application, again, I would ask that, you know, you, you keep it to the, the variance criteria that's before us tonight. Heard clear support for the Word Barn, which we would certainly appreciate, but it is already a long night. So I just ask that you, you keep on point. But anyone who would like to come up and speak, please come up, state your name, address, and anything you would like, any comments you'd like to make. If there are no members of the public, we do have some attendees in the Zoom. So I'd like to give a little bit of time for any members of the public who do want to speak in person. And if not, I'm going to open it up to the, to the Zoom. Seeing none, I would ask that anyone who's watching on the Zoom, please, virtually raise your hand and we'll allow you to make comments. Looks like we're down to one, one person participating now. Okay. Okay, seeing nothing.
I just want to say thank you very much for the town, the board's consideration. I know, we appreciate the process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to close the public, public session and we'll go into deliberation. I guess to start out, I certainly welcome all the comments. I'd like to have Martha. Thank Martha, why don't you vote on this one again, since Ann, you voted on the first two? Split it up that way. And, but you, would you like, I'm thinking to have you vote, Martha, but, but, and you are, you're welcome to comment. So, and I would invite the board any comments that anyone would like to make.
Do you want someone to go through the variance criteria?
If there are no general comments, then yes, that would be very helpful.
Anybody else?
Are there general comments? I'm a little surprised not, no? Okay.
I think we got a lot of the comments out.
Yeah, I think we have too. So we'll take the one and two together. The variance is not contrary to the public interest and the spirit of the ordinance is observed. The proposed use must not conflict with the explicit or implicit purpose of the ordinance and must, excuse me, and must not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, threaten the public health, safety or welfare, or otherwise injure public rights.
Well, I would contend that it does not meet the requirements of one and two because the nature of the short-term use, the fact that is my belief that the. the nature of the short term use, the fact that, it's my belief that the economic impact to the greater community, particularly the hotel industry, is inconsistent with the actual words and the intent of not having transient, short term transient, or am I having trouble with that?
You got it.
Rentals outside of a hotel for legal bed and breakfast.
So the specific variance being requested is to permit a single short term rental unit at the property in a preexisting detached dwelling. That's the specific variance that's been requested here. And I think I disagree with you. I believe that the proposed use does not conflict with the purpose of the ordinance. And I'm not concerned with the hotel industry. I'm not, that's not part of our criteria. There isn't even a hotel in Exeter. Well, there are. Of course, there are. There's multiple ones. But I think one of the issues is that by running this as a B and B, or short term, I know, not a B and B anymore, single short term rental unit.
Is that what the request actually says?
Yeah, single short term rental unit at the property in a preexisting detached dwelling within the Word Barn. So were we to grant this variance, it would say, we grant your request for a variance in order to permit a single short term rental unit. I think it's prescribed enough so that it does not conflict with, as it says in, and I'm reading the variance criteria, explicit or implicit purpose of the ordinance. And I think when we'll get to later, I think we will discover that in fact, the, the nature of the property is such that this is not going to be an issue where suddenly, however many 32 people in Exeter who have Airbnbs are all going to be going, me next, me next. I hope not.
Well, you've already got 32 people who are doing it illegally.
Right. And, you know, we're not in the, Doug's not in the business of going onto the Airbnb site and chasing them all down.
Nor is that before us. So.
Right. Nor is that before us this evening. This is about this property.
I need to correct you on that. That is not true. We do go on the site.
Oh, do you?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
We do go on the site when, occasionally, when we have a free moment, I'm one person in a big town.
And when there's a complaint.
What?
And when there's a complaint.
Yes.
Right.
When there's a complaint. But while we're on the site confirming that, we may see another one. And we do that. And we can only do so much. I can't send 32 violations out there once unless I'm ordered to do that. But.
Again, I'm looking at the variance criteria, and it says must not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. I don't believe that this would alter the essential character of the neighborhood. I do not believe that it would threaten the public health, safety, or welfare, or otherwise injure public rights. That's, this, we seem to be hung up on one. Or one and two.
Well, I guess what I'm thinking of is a broader sense of neighborhood. In that it would affect the whole town.
This one unit?
This one unit.
Okay.
There's a big difference between none and one. Not a big difference between one and six.
We have to look at it very narrowly. The proposed use must not conflict with the purpose of the ordinance, and must, the proposed use must not alter the essential character of the neighborhood.
Definition of neighborhood.
Right. Well, but you can also say threaten public health, safety, or welfare.
Well, it doesn't have to violate both. But the problem, the problem I'm seeing is, we've got some folks here who say they're doing a good, careful job screening. But if you've got a unit, a separate structure on your site, that you now don't monitor the day to day traveling in and out of that unit. And I don't mean you as an individual, I mean, the general you. You've got an opportunity for all kinds of misuse and illegal use, that it'd be very difficult to track one way or the other.
I think one of the things that, that just, interestingly enough, would have appeared before if we, if we accepted this as a special exception, is the concept of owner occupied, which with a variance, does not exist. It says a single short term rental unit at the property in a preexisting attached dwelling located within the Word Barn. That's the application. So we would need to make a condition of approval that this be owner occupied.
Well, we certainly would need to do that.
I've suggested, you know, suggested tying it to the, to the existing Word Barn use as well. And I think if we do both those things, it's extremely unique and not going to be transferable to other properties. And it does address the unique situation on the property. There is a unit there that, I mean, if you want to look at hardship, it's going to be tough to rent. It's an existing dwelling unit. And I'm not saying that we have to, well.
Hard to rent is not our concern.
Yeah, that is not the hardship.
That's not a hardship.
Criteria.
That's not a hardship.
Maybe a personal hardship, but I agree. It's not a legal hardship.
Right.
Hard to rent. I mean, because there is no right to maximize the number of, you know, uses on your property, or the rentals on your property. They have, they are using the property. But I think we're jumping ahead. So I don't want to, because we're not, we're not hitting hardship yet.
Okay. We won't jump ahead. But I still have arguments on that.
So I'm going to jump ahead. Number three, substantial, without resolving one and two. Three, substantial justice is done, the benefits of the applicant should not be outweighed by harm to the general public or to other individuals. There's been no testimony whatsoever that it would be harmed to other individuals in the sense of abutters. I believe that I'm hearing some concern about harm to the general public. I'm not sure that I buy into it. But I'm, I'm hearing a little bit of that from others. I don't want to speak for you, or you, or you, or anybody else, but. Well, I think, you know, you're not voting, but you can participate. Yeah, okay.
I think we need to be careful to say that it harms the general public because they've asked for short term rental use. And we have to take it on the specifics of this application.
I don't see how that harms the general public.
Well, that's, that's the question, I think. I tend to agree with you. I don't think there, I tend to agree with you. I don't, I don't see any harm to the general public in this specific instance, where, you know, the concern about transient rentals is you have people coming and going, you have people that don't care for the property, you have people that come to party and make noise. Well, we've already found that conditions on this property are proper for, in event space.
Let them make noise.
And so it, yeah. And so it seems, it's difficult for me to then, with the same breath, say, you know, we've got those issues, but it's buffered enough, and it's protected, the neighborhood's protected enough for the Word Barn events, but not for a single, you know, single room rental, basically, or a small apartment rental.
Which is yet another reason for your suggestion for tying the two uses together in a very explicit way. I think we can dispense with four. The values of surrounding properties are not diminished. We have absolutely no testimony that would indicate that that would be the case. I mean, we do have one person saying that they think it's fine. But I think we can dispense with the value of surrounding properties. And the one that apparently everybody hates, not just me, little enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. Is there hardship here? I have a hard time finding that there's hardship here. I'll be honest with you.
There's an existing unit. I guess I'm confused as to why you think there wouldn't be. There's an existing unit that is not able to be used effectively.
Of course it could be used effectively.
Given the, the permitted use already on the property. So I guess in my past experience, when we accepted hardship in other cases, it's been a lot lighter type of hardship than than something like that. We've granted them a variance for the Word Barn use, and it's not, it's not consistent with long term rental. And so they're asking to use an existing space, rather than let it go vacant, to use it for a shorter term rental. I guess that to me does constitute hardship.
Well, but they created the hardship.
Thank you. The hardship was created by the owner by requesting the variance for the Word Barn. They created their own hardship. You can't then create the situation and go, but the situation's unfair.
Okay.
And there was a long term rental up until.
And there certainly could be again.
Yes, put up some soundproofing or.
There certainly could be again. And, and I.
Yeah, I mean, I'm struggling with that as well. I mean, there is reasonable use. There, you know, the property, because I think what you're getting at, Laura, is B of the hardship criteria, which is that, that the property can't reasonably, can't reasonably be used in strict conformance with the ordinance. But, you know, the property is getting reasonable use. And I understand, and I'm sensitive to the fact that this is a, is a benefit to the Word Barn, but that's not really the criteria.
That's correct.
No, I understand. But I'm saying there's an existing unit. It's not like they want to create a unit. It exists. And in that sense, I think it does represent a hardship.
Well, right now, they don't have a rentable existing unit.
Yes, they do. They just don't have a renter.
No.
It's rentable.
It's not.
Well, it's not permitted.
Oh, it's not permitted.
As a long term rental either.
Right, 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 right.
It's existing space. Yet we've granted the, the variance for the Word Barn use. And I know that came after the space existed, the apartment unit existed, but.
Accessory dwelling units are permitted by special exception in all zones.
Well, I get the point that the specific use of this space, of this property, does limit the long term rental in that unit. That, that makes logical sense to me.
Is that?
That doesn't mean it, that doesn't mean it's sufficient for hardship, but that does make sense to me. I guess, I want to go through this, the specific criteria, just because I want to make sure we're covering everything. So, you know, I already said I don't believe it meets B, because that, that states that the property can't reasonably be used in strict conformance, and it can. It can be used as a residence, which is why this is an impossible test. But that's why there are other provisions. And that is that unnecessary hardship means owing to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from others in the area. I think that's met. And I think it's pretty clear, there are special conditions to this property that distinguish it. And I think that's primarily the buffer. The fact that there is, you know, Rain's Farm across from it, there is, I mean, for the same reason, I think that we found special conditions for the Word Barn use. I think there's special conditions here.
It's not just the nearest occupant, it's the nearest occupiable property is sufficiently distant. I mean, somebody could build on an empty lot, but there aren't, there's nothing here.
Well, and my understanding is that they can't build, right?
Well, certainly across the street, you can't.
And there's, and there's open space for the captain's way, I think subdivision.
Right.
And then no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application. So I think, you know, that's where we got stuck with the first two provisions, is what's the relationship between the purpose of the restriction on, I shouldn't say the restriction, because there isn't a restriction on.
There's no restriction.
On transient use. It's, you know, it's allowed for hotels, motels, and it's not allowed in this district. So what's the reason? Is because they want to keep, this is a rural area, and the intent of the ordinance is to keep, is to reduce and limit, you know, transient occupancy. That tends to create more noise, that tends to have people coming and going at different times. And then lastly, that the proposed use is a reasonable one. I think, you know, rental use is certainly reasonable. The question is whether transient short term rental use is reasonable.
That's essentially the issue from my perspective.
I don't, yeah. And I'm, I'm, I'm just going through the criteria here, because I'm, I'm struggling, I think, with this as well. I mean.
We all want to do the right thing here. There's no question about that. But it's just so unclear.
Well, and I think that, you know, and what I get back to is, I mean, the, you know, that we have to be careful to not legislate, to not amend the ordinance. And that's what I'm worrying a little that we're doing here, is, you know, this certainly seems ripe for a zoning amendment. Not easy to do. But we do have to.
We've talked about that for a couple of years. It hasn't happened. And I, I understand why. It's a tough one.
Yeah.
Competing property rights.
Lots of, lots of communities are struggling with this. This is not a local problem.
Right. And there's competing, you know, there's competing issues regarding property rights involved with short term rentals. But in this case, if we could tie it to the Word Barn use and the, the owner occupancy of the primary residence, I think that we've, we've kind of covered all the bases as far as.
I don't, I think, I don't think we can create a word, a statement that puts restrictions on the property to a future owner when the current owner is no longer involved.
It's related to the uses, not to the owner.
Right. I wrote something down. I'll just read it. Should the commercial use on the property currently known as the Word Barn lapse, and I'm uncomfortable with the word lapse, and I'll need some help with that, then the short term rental use would also lapse. So lapse, cease.
Discontinue.
Discontinue. I'm not sure what the correct word is there.
I would probably say abandonment, because I think, let's see if that's defined in the ordinance. Typically, it is. And that's lack of use generally for, yeah. To stop, abandonment, to stop the use of a property or activity without the intent to resume. When the use of a property is ceased for a period of 12 consecutive months, intent to abandon will be presumed unless.
Abandonment is a different sort of thing, I think. Cease. I normally avoid eye contact with counsel when I'm sitting over here. But I'm going to violate that. He's not allowed to say anything. You're just allowed to nod.
Well, we can ask him a question. But I don't know that we're there yet.
I don't know that we're there yet either. Sorry. Now avoid eye contact again.
Well, Ed, I'm not, I'm not suggesting I'm anywhere near changing my mind.
Got it.
But if I haven't been sufficiently persuasive to convince. But if I haven't been sufficiently persuasive to convince two other people who agree with me, in addition to your restriction, you need to make a requirement that they never come back and ask for...
No.
Now, I don't mean on any issue.
I don't think we can do that on this. I don't think we can do that, but we can make it perfectly clear where we would come down on that.
Well, what I'm getting at is, we all just talk about bed and breakfast.
Right.
And bed and breakfast says you can have four. Well, if it's okay to have a...
I see, you're going to ask.
Hmm. And frankly, that would be my expectation, that as soon as the ink dries on the approval, we'll get a request to build three more. He's even got room, he can move his honey someplace else and put two units in the basement.
No. And I thought, and I thought I was cynical.
No, no, I'm not being facetious. I am dead serious.
Well, the point is that it can take place, whether it would or not, it doesn't matter.
Right.
Right. We need to anticipate.
It's a good point, Rick.
And again, these uses run with the property, and the word, somebody could buy the property, continue to run the word barn, and...
But, yeah, and what's the definition of the word barn?
Commercial use currently known as...
Well, I think we would have to use the language in the prior approval, which is on page one in a footnote.
Right.
I don't think we can do that.
Mr. Baum, in your professional opinion, do you feel that such a condition would withstand scrutiny?
I think we can probably impose that condition. The two questions is, you know, we tied it to that use, I think, I don't know why that couldn't occur. The second question is, you know, I think to the point it has to be enforceable, or we just make Doug's life a nightmare, and it's just a loser. I mean, there's just no point in making a condition that's unenforceable, because it won't be. It may not be the Andersons, but eventually it won't be enforced, and then we've undermined, you know, we've undermined our decision. So I guess, Doug, what is your, I mean, I'm not sure that we've even given you enough language right now to be able to give an opinion, but if there are major enforcement issues with this, I'd like to hear it, just so we're not stepping on ourselves here.
I think we already have.
We've already stepped on ourselves?
Major enforcement issue.
Okay.
Please don't lay this on me, but, I mean, I have my opinions. I'd heard the word self-created hardship sticks in my mind, and there are still conditions of the prior approval that have not been met.
Yeah.
Been going on for months, and I did hear from DOT, and still nothing.
Yeah.
So that's my opinion, that's, I'm just, I'm just telling you the facts. And I'm not doing this to try and ruin anything for anybody, but it just seems to be one thing after one.
The specific application must meet the five variance criteria. And in every other case where I have presented, read through the variance criteria, there's generally assent, yep, okay, yep, okay, fine, you move through it. I didn't really hear assent on anything but four, which is the values of surrounding properties. There's just so many questions, and it's not about anything other than following the law, following the rules. And it just, I want to do the right thing, but I want to do the right thing for all of the citizens of Exeter, not just those that attend the events, and not just the applicants. And this is about doing the right thing for all of the citizens of Exeter. That's who we represent here.
Agreed, and well-stated.
And I'm just not getting the sense that we would be able to agree, I mean, it has to pass all five.
Yes.
Can't pass four, three, two, or one. Has to pass all, and I don't, I don't see a motion succeeding. I'd be happy to make one if you feel a vote would be important to have, but I just don't, I just don't see it passing. There are just so many questions. What, what is this?
Well, I think it's, yeah, I think it's probably time to move to a vote, one way or another.
Or another.
And so I, unless there's more discussion, I would ask that we make a, that someone make a motion one way or the other.
A motion traditionally states which of the variance criteria it does not meet in order to provide guidance for the applicant.
Yes.
I think, I think I could support all five criteria. I didn't speak up because I didn't think it was necessary, but I, I think it meets all five. I think on the hardship, you're right, that it doesn't really meet B, but it does, you know, after we discussed it, I feel that it could meet A. So if I didn't voice my assent, I apologize, but I do think it, I'm, I think this meets...
We don't need to all agree.
No, we don't all need to agree, and that's...
We rarely, we often don't.
Well, we often do as well, so, I mean, I didn't, I didn't speak up, but if that's concerning to you, then I just wanted to go on the record that I do think it meets all five.
Well, I think your motion would differ from mine.
Right. And I, you know, I can go first, or I can go second, or we can just see where this goes.
Yeah, if you're prepared, Laura, to make a motion, why don't you go ahead and do that, just to move it forward.
Okay.
You've been writing these things down?
No, but I think I'm going to go with, just give me a second to compose. So I move to accept the application for variance to permit a single short-term rental at the property in a pre-existing detached dwelling, in a pre-existing unit in a detached dwelling located within the word barn, conditioned upon the continued use of the property for community gatherings with ticket sales for certain events within the existing accessory barn structure identified as the word barn, and also conditioned upon owner occupancy of the primary dwelling unit.
Before you stop your suggestion of what it should say, we talked about the possibility of future increases.
Well, this was a single unit in an existing...
Right.
She said single.
In an existing dwelling. I forget exactly the word.
Existing space within...
Right. An existing dwelling unit within the word barn.
Okay. You want to go with that, Harold?
Yep.
So that's my motion.
Do we have a second? Then the motion, without a second, the motion fails.
Okay.
Bob, do you want to make a motion?
I feel like it should go to the vote. Is it too late to second Laura's motion?
If we want to, it, well, it failed, I do think...
Yeah, right. So whether or not, do we need to list off which specific points it failed on?
We do. This is a denial, and we have to give reasons for a denial. So let's go through the points one by one.
What are we, what are we doing?
Sorry. We have, we have, well, I guess we have a motion, we have a motion to approve, we didn't get a second, it failed.
So it failed.
So it fails.
So now we need another motion.
Does anyone want to make another motion?
Okay.
But Kevin wanted to bring out the points...
If we can get another motion, I am, I am fine to go through that. I think if there is no other motion and this application fails, we have to provide, we have to provide the reasoning.
I see.
Oh, you mean we basically are deadlocked?
Well, I, no.
No, the next motion would be a motion to deny, but you have to be specific which of the five criteria is the basis.
Right.
And that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at now.
Okay, and it's my belief that it fails one and two because of the impact on the greater community.
You're welcome to make a motion, I, you're welcome to make that motion.
Well, I'm, that's not where I, I think it only fails. I think it also fails on hardship. Now, I'm under instructions from my boss not to talk very much.
Not to talk very much, yeah. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to deny the application for a variance to permit a single short-term rental unit at the property in a pre-existing attached dwelling within the word barn on the basis that it does not meet variance criteria five and that there would be no unnecessary hardship.
I think it would be helpful to have some discussion about why it doesn't meet the hardship criteria. I know that, I think that's...
Little enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship because of the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. There is no fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance and the specific application of that provision to the property. You think it does meet that?
I don't, actually.
Ah, okay.
I don't. I think that's where I'm struggling, is ultimately, there is a, this town has decided that short-term rentals are not permitted except as hotel motel use, and those are in specific zones outside of the rural zone, outside of this zoning district. I think that ultimately, that the reason for that is because of the additional impact of transient use. I realize this is minimal, and this is why I'm struggling with this so much. This isn't a hotel, but it is the definition that we have, and so there is, you know, the impact of that is more people coming and going. As the applicant indicated, this is, you know, though, I get the point that people are coming in and using more town services, more town amenities, but they're also basically renting this property for the entirety of the year, and that means all of the additional impacts beyond a single renter as well. You know, additional impacts to town, to, you know, municipal use, to potentially, though there have been no, you know, we don't know of any violations of any, or, you know, emergency calls, but those are, those additional potential impacts, which is why, why this type of use tends to be in a more institutional setting and closer to the downtown core.
I guess I'm less concerned with that than I am with the fact that the hardship is not that the property cannot be rented, because it certainly can be rented. It's that by coexisting with the word barn, the applicant claims that the, this can only be rented on a short-term basis rather than a long-term basis, but that's not a hardship that has anything to do with the special conditions of the property.
I agree. Well, well...
It has to do with the particular uses that the owner wishes to have on the property. And I would be perfectly comfortable with an application that was not about this short-term concept. I don't think that there's, frankly, I think that there's probably no additional, I mean, they're on water, they're not on water and sewer, I'm sure they're on septic and well. So I don't think there's impacts by having, I don't think that the, that the less impactful use statement on the part of the applicants and their counsel flies, but I don't think that there's increased impact by having. I think it all has to do with the fact that the hardship is self-imposed here. There's nothing about the property. And normally, if it's, using the example the council gave, if it's a 90-foot frontage, then that's, that's about the property. And, yeah, okay, fine, it's 90-foot frontage, we can make a decision on that. That's something about the property. There's nothing about the property that creates a hardship. There is no hardship here, which is why I believe it does not meet five. And I would, I'm not entirely comfortable making that motion, but I believe that is what we are required to do.
Could I not find any support in including one and two?
You're welcome to make an amendment to the motion that has been moved, been moved and seconded that we deny based on five. You're welcome to suggest and see...
I would like to make that motion.
And I apologize, Mr. Chairman, I'm shooting my mouth off. You're the chair, not me.
I make that motion. Any second.
Any second.
I'll second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. All in favor of amending the motion?
To include that it does not meet criteria one and two.
And, and, right.
In addition to five.
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
Okay. Two ayes. Any opposed?
Well, no.
Yeah, the chair votes nay as well, so...
Okay.
So it fails three to two?
Yes.
It fails three to two.
The amendment fails three to two, we're back to the original motion, so...
Right.
The amendment fails, or...
The amendment fails. So we are, the motion is to deny based on lack of hardships, criteria five. And unless there's any further amendments...
I'm done.
I would ask that, I'm going to call the vote, all in favor of the motion to deny based on failure to meet criteria five.
Aye.
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 Aye. Sorry, the application fails. Thank you all for coming out and for your patience tonight.
So what do you want to do at 10 o'clock?
Is it 10 o'clock?
Mr. Chairman, are we definitely now going forward with our meetings in person as opposed to via Zoom?
Yes. My understanding is we have... Yes. My understanding is we have no choice. We can continue the Zoom as an option for people, for attendees, but we have to hold live meetings unless the, there's, there's some, there was some talk of a statutory change, but I don't, I don't know the status.
Is it possible to have a hybrid?
Well, I was going to say option for attendees, but not an option for board members.
Not an option for board members. Sorry.
And that's true of all boards and meetings?
Yes. I, I have no idea. There was some talk about permitting it, but I, I don't know that that went anywhere. We're not quite done. We still have approval of the May 18th minutes.
Mr. Chair, I'm not voting.
You're not going to stay for the bidder in?
No, no, I was just going to make a motion for...
So I actually read them. I was here, and I read them, and they were okay with me.
Are you certain that I nominated Mr. Baum to be chair? Sounds like there's an error there.
I don't think any of you know what you're doing.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. This session is, that session is over. The vote session is over. We understand your comments, but now is not the time for them. We are now reviewing minutes. You may not be happy with our decision, but it was our decision, and the, and the decision has been made, and that application is now complete. Any comments on the minutes?
None.
I move that we accept the minute as written.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 There we go.
Minutes are approved.
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome. Too late.
Too late.
Can you give me a ride home?
Yes, of course.
I can give you a ride.
Be happy to. Thank you.
We are adjourned. I don't know if the video's off yet, but we are adjourned.